...our indication, our tonight I've asked for, I've done, the pastor had pastors, had deacons, and so tonight I decided to ask one of the deaconesses from Montrose. This is Chris Sack, so come in, hope this will be a prayer. Officially, I'll make a roll call. Number one.
Present.
Number two.
Here.
Number three.
Here.
Number four.
Here.
And I am present as well. Okay, anything else that we didn't do, we'll just mark.
That's great. Dear Lord, we beg of your presence now in this place. We ask of God that you guide the thoughts, the decisions, the speech, and the favor of those who serve you through your service, to people, to your people. We thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day in the neighborhood. We thank you, oh God, that you have given us the gift of choice. And we ask that you guide us, that we always make choices that reflect what you offer in our lives. Thank you for life, thank you for health, thank you for strength, and thank you for every opportunity that we have to serve others. And, and show through the example of Christ that it needs to be a lover of people. And it is in his name that we pray, amen.
May the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, in the great unity of the world.
Thank you, Mrs. Chris Sack. Okay, are there any additions or deletions that would like to be made to this agenda as it's been presented?
I have one request, but I don't see the gentleman here. He wanted to make a request of the commission. But I'll present his case just when it comes to it, I guess.
Robert.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, something you will.
Oh. Uh, public forum, this time has been allowed for the public comment for any item that is not on the agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the commission, because of us approaching podium and give their name and address. If anyone here that would like to do, uh, present something that's not on our agenda.
If it's all right, I'll go ahead and present Sam's, not yet this one. Sam Colferson, one of my neighbors, wanted to request the commission for assistance in abating some of his water bill. His past water bill, like four hundred and something dollars, he'd already got. And he doesn't use that much water, he's on limited income. And they found out that in January, they were gone for a week, and when they came home, somebody had turned on it outside those fifth. So they've run for how many days before he got here, and no control over being able to turn it off. So he is asking if there's something the commission could do on relieving some of the costs to him, since he's on limited income, and that's taken about two and a half or three years to pay that back. It was spooled up over time.
What's the policy on that?
Well, the policy is, is that if there's a leak or something like that's done, and it's reported, you know, to the city, the city will and normally give them a three-month payment plan, so that that bill will be paid off to the, the next bill. And as Roger said, we'd ask about that, and we do show that, because the new software lets us know exactly when your water usage is on, when it peaked, and it was on on the twenty-first, and I think shut off on the twenty-sixth. The only concern I have is we get a lot of these calls, so if we do one, I think you can have to open yourself up. The fact that you're going to be in the business of deciding whose water bill you can adjust, whose water bill you're not, that's one concern. Because we get a lot of calls, a lot of reasons why they can't pay, or they're claiming the usage is right and what have you. Because I know we're going through a period with new meters, and some people are saying higher bill and lower bill, because they have the dates adjusted, this next bill should be on a regular cycle. A lot of people, about five hundred people in this community have what was called a dead meter. They have not been reading their water usage for years, and so they're getting like an eighty-eight dollar bill. They're now getting a bill that may be a hundred and twenty, and they're saying, oh, my bill's not, and no, you did build a book, you're just now being billed for what you actually were using, so you got the benefit of all those premiums. So what I'm getting at is, this is one case, maybe he was gone, and somehow the water got turned on, but we get numbers of these. And so intercept something, I'd almost rather it be a policy, because individually than, than just telling people, we're gonna have to come back. You want me to act like, you tell them this?
Scott, what was the policy on the, um, the water, uh, well, that we had, that was a loan that we took out that required us to not give away water?
That's a state. And usually your loan documents, uh, when you pledge your water revenue as collateral for your loan, there will be a document, a provision, and then you can not give away free service. Come up here to the podium, we'll talk about your issue now.
I didn't know it was here. How is that the city?
Is that, is that button green up there?
Okay, before you start.
So you said that was, that there were dispositions, and you're about not giving free water and free service late, which you pledged, or revenue as collateral for your name on the lawsuit.
Are we doing that, because that was something that?
In terms of, is the, is the loan paid off?
Yeah, it was a provision alone that, uh, because of the conditions that, and it, it had come up many times prior to even the water meters being replaced, that people had issues with their water bill, and we were told that we could give away the water. And that was when we made a provision to have it spaced over a period of time. But, um, that's just history, I guess.
Well, this is Sam, the one we're talking about, so he wants to introduce himself.
Sam, would you please, uh, give us the name, Jagger?
Yeah, Sam Colferson, I live on Main Eight, Macy Avenue, there in the Kellah. I was quite shocked to get a huge water bill, fifty-seven thousand gallons. We were doing, because look back five, ten years, our usage is around two thousand or a little under two thousand a month. I talked my commissioner about it, and he looked into it. Said, he was, and so, and then they sent me an email. The, um, part of the city administrator sent an email that they identified with the leak, that was a major leak. Happened between one nineteen twenty-five and one twenty-six twenty-five. And that's only because, that one nineteen, around town, on a flipping period. And one nineteen twenty-six. I'm sorry, please say it back, I'm misunderstanding.
He said earlier that, uh, computer register had blown on the twenty-first and turned it off.
Yeah, okay, there it is. I would think my response to you right there. Uh, he said, spending usage, it started January, and we were out of town, we didn't have anything here. There's a seat, and as I said, there was a reservation. There is, uh, Suzanne Stott, a radio station, and the post office, the copy of this. Very long one, is in with the students. So they said, we know all here. And that's why I was so confused about, about the, the leak, the leak. Um, when I bought that house fifteen years ago, I'd rarely come in, up to the entrance, and the little foot system, I separated it for the post office. And there was no leak, that's why I was baffled. And I thought that, I know the town, it couldn't be the levers, and I thought, well, it has to be, like, change number, or be the reason, because we did not use that. I don't expect that would happen. Because the vandalism of that property, I think the house wasn't politically, and something there to greet with my thoughts and things, but I don't think any of those are ever approved. But you can prove that we weren't there. And that post office was turned off, and we got back, and I might sound opposed to it, but it was turned on in the side door, not by the driveway, where everybody uses it, or where it's used. And I didn't want to invite anybody to hear it. Roger would have seen it, it was supposed to be in the driveway. We weren't there, and we didn't use the water.
Just before you came in, our city administrator, can we do repeat what we said earlier about, um, once the meters, these meters have been replaced, and they're pretty optioned out, and they're mainly working? And a lot of people probably are at the same situation as you are. Could you repeat, Carl?
Well, to use the word leak, we, all we knew was that there was usage, and we, sometimes that indicates a leak, especially if the person's not running water. So, so being a leak and not, as he said, a bid was on, so that water was used. The city normally offers a three-month payment plan. If it was been a repair, it could even produce the copy of the bill, and I think that helps with the justification you referenced to the adjustment. But we don't have the mechanism to just waive that usage under any circumstances.
And is there a way that instead of just letting it to a three-month payback, because he is on a limited income, that it can be spread out farther for maybe six to twelve payments until he gets a payback?
Exactly, just a policy change.
That'd be a policy change, or can it be, I saw one case, and so.
I don't have air in here, so I, I don't know, I just asked when this happened, and I said, what's, what are, how do we deal with it? And I was told that we, we give people the time to pay it off within one bill before the next bill, so to be in that, should be paid off for the next quarter, so I was like.
Well, his normal usage, he's had a problem, man, but this one, which puts a pretty big impact on his income, wouldn't need to be spread out further, because he wouldn't be able to even do that for a month.
The only thing I would say is, if, um, the commission is going to entertain anything, you know, whether it's a loan payback there or whatever, um, because he does have a, you know, some leak backs here, it does seem to indicate that if somebody was on the property, we may lose. I think it'd be good for him to file a police report, for the, so we have something unique here that supports it. He has a police report, I don't know if the police have investigated, or, you know, if it's out, we don't, but at least he has a police report that somebody vandalized his house. And that may give you the justification, if you're interested in providing, that may separate it from some, some other situations. That would be my advice. Usually where you see the relief being given, um, is when it's, the issue is the city's meter, the city side of the, the meter. You know, it's our meter or our side, if you call it the, the, the high usage. Then there's also, and, and, it's not relevant here, but some cities, they'll, they'll give a leak on the sewer side, because of water, sewer does usually base on the margin. But when you have a leak in water, it doesn't go back to the sewer system, so they'll give a leak on the sewer. But, you know, and, and generally, you gotta be careful, not, you know, you don't want to have a situation where everybody, who made, their bill's higher than normal, comes in and asks for relief. But I think a police report regarding vandalism, trespass, might help differentiate that from a normal request.
What's the, what is their bill, what is, what's the amount of the bill?
Four hundred and sixty-three dollars. See, the thing is, that can prove we weren't there. We did not use it, if there was a leak, and my responsibility, it's my property, I'll take the responsibility, and I would pay it, however, I would have to work out a bill, but I would pay it. I don't feel this is my responsibility, I feel I'm preventing vandalism here, and.
While we're working out, can you file a police report? And maybe come into the office with the administrator and figure out a payment schedule while we're trying to figure out what to do with these issues as they're coming up? And see what you can afford to pay it back. Because I know a three-month payment thing, that'd be about seventy-five, a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five a month. Plus your regular water bill?
I don't know. Six thousand gallons?
Well, my bill is a higher than that, I'll get them to the headquarters, mine was from eight, eight up to ten, something like that.
I think that brings up a good point, where they wanted to not base his average usage, if they've done old water bills, the old water meter, but now on a new water meter, see what his average usage is, and then compare that to, and compare that to that.
Why don't we go back ten meters?
Well, we got new meters, there are ten, there's a new meter, and the new meters are accurate, and some people's meters weren't really accurate, so they were getting free water, or reduced rate water. So everybody's now got these new meters, and a lot of people are going to be paying more, it's not that the rate went up, um, it's just the meter now is accurate, and recording how much you're using. And so we can now actually see how much you're using, and then compare that to this one bill question, because we have a better, um, average, I guess, just not as low as the new meter.
Yeah, just, just come here.
So I would give an average of the, maybe two months, something like that, of, of the, the new meter, with normal usage, and then see what it is.
So would it be able to defer to this until he came up with that, if you're, this, this particular bill, would be deferred, if we came up with a point of reference? Because right now we don't have a point of reference, because of existing.
It's all the stores, you know, the old ones.
Right.
So. If that's what the commission wishes for, let's get us some new statute on usage, allowing to file a police report. Um, and then even, even staff, and, and then it can be brought back to them.
I know it's a lot of, a lot of work on your part, and I'm like.
Oh, I have, I have some, exactly, I have a special problem with, everybody coming, that I'm so kind of throwing it to the dashboard, and everybody's trying, and I'm like, oh, this is my responsibility.
Well, I mean, this is, well, this is one, this is what you need to understand, is from the meter to your house, that's your responsibility. It doesn't matter how the water gets used, vandalism, water break, from the meter to your house is your responsibility. And if there's a problem with the meter, that's technically the city's responsibility. I'm trying to give the commission some little room here, if they want it, to say, I vandalized you, um, I'll have a police report, it's on file. Um, let's see what the actor's in the meter is on a couple readings, and then we can sit down and see how much you, how much water in excess you really get. And then that's, because the hard line approach is, that's from the meter to your house, regardless of. I would refer to this on that, I mean, it's administrative question.
That's why I asked, I think they're gonna have to talk to you.
Was one thirteen fifty, this is last bill.
The one that is, the, the last one, the first one with the new meters.
So then it probably wasn't. Glenn, don't, don't ignore your question, because of the fact that the commission wants to adapt and what have you, we can want to work around the due date, the cutoff date, and make sure those things.
So it doesn't need cutoff, there's no late fees?
Okay, that's, that's mine.
Well, yeah, what we're getting at, anyway, again.
Okay, that was mine too.
Yeah, and we can do that.
We're, we're working with you.
Okay.
That's, that's a good deal.
Come into the office tomorrow morning, some more.
Thank you for considering this.
Thank you, have it. Okay, uh, are there any more other comments? Public forum? Uh, Nancy?
Hi, Nancy Berry, four thirty-five West Delaware. Just wanted to remind everybody that next weekend is Easter weekend, and it is the seventh annual process for Christ's Resilience. And we have a lot of classes going across the city, and a lot of great sponsors, new and returning, and we hope that everybody come out. You can get your mail online, from our Facebook page, thank you.
Thank you so much. At that point, any more further comments? And we're close, everyone began our presentations to the commission. First presentation was the update of the stormwater, with the turn.
Evening, Commissioner Ron Watson, with, uh, with the turn. Um, just wanted to provide you guys a, a fairly quick update on where we are with the East or Water Facility Plan, or what we're working on for the city. The plan is, is essentially broken up into three phases. So first phase, the field collection, um, we go around and collect what assets you have in the, uh, in terms of, right now. Phase two is going to be modeling, um, as of the middle of March, we can do the model phase of this, which is what you guys have in front of you. Um, it's broken down into three different categories, so the first category of modeling is going to be what we consider a ten-year near future event. So ten-year near future, rather than looking at the actual ten-year or the near future category of it, um, you generally recommend that you look at the actual rainfall calculations based on that model. And so as you can see in the bottom left corner of that, now you're going to be at, this is going to be based on six point two five inches in twenty-four hours, is going to be the ten-year event. The next page is going to be a twenty-five year, year, or a near future event, uh, that's going to be eighteen point two three inches in twenty-four hours. And then the final page, which is going to be the closest representation of the event that we've experienced, uh, is going to be fifteen point three nine inches in twenty-four hours. And based off of that modeling now is where we move it into project identification, so.
Do we, do you think that?
Yeah, sure.
Is that button on?
It's on.
It is. Do you guys hear that or not?
No.
We need to case all of them.
Project your voice.
Absolutely. And, uh, and so now we're moving into where we're going to start identifying projects based off of this modeling, and then working through different conveyance options to identify three different options of really specific projects, that's what we're trying. Those three options are what we discussed about in previous council meetings where we do that in a format to go after SRF funding specifically. Uh, and we are still on pace with this project to be completed by the middle of June, as we were.
This year?
Yes. So we were going to say it was going to be in our scope, that it was going to be an eight-month project, uh, as far as the plan goes, and so we should have it completed by, so I think. Uh, the other piece of it too, that is not, it's related to stormwater overall, but it's not specifically related to the facility plan, is that we have identified, um, what's considered supplemental appropriation funding for Milton Colleen. Uh, it's, uh, just got passed out, it's a federal program, it's passed down to DDP and the ministry through SRF. Uh, the program has one point six billion dollars in it in relation to building and damaging communities. We expect that to be, uh, an SRF period, either in May or August, so it's still keep being on which one we're under. Uh, we're currently working on RFI for the city, but we have identified between drinking water and storm water, thirty million dollars, which is what's left. Twenty million in storm water, and then fifteen million in drinking water.
Yeah, uh, for me personally, um, what you're actually doing is to modeling out what a event, three different events, of what would be the water, be collected, and where it would be moving to, and the highest, uh, model that you're giving us is as close as you can get to Milton. For Milton, was how many inches?
Uh, I believe it was nearly eighteen inches in twenty-four hours.
Eighteen inches in twenty-four hours, and so we are, now, what did the modeling do? Would the modeling show that we can maybe possibly have a, um, a water retention pump, or water flow?
It does, so the modeling allows us a foundation to then go in and put in design parameters, and to then show where we can convey the water to, and what impact it has when we convey to certain areas. So we'll put in different design parameters around the tension areas, we'll put in different design parameters and pumping options, and it shows us, and, and there's more into it than just the, the modeling aspect of it, because we also have to understand where can we move the water to, what will be allowed? You know, can we move it into the basin, the community, can we move it into a preserve? And so all that will be taken into consideration as we build out what the options are for, you know, what we can do for, for future projects.
Are we maxed out in terms of where we could pour water into our lakes?
Um, I wouldn't say it's maxed out, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a little too soon to identify where water can be moved to, and what the impact is going to have, because you do have certain lakes that I would say are not necessarily maxed out. Um, but until we actually convey that water through modeling, we won't necessarily have an idea of what that impact looks like when we move the water in that direction.
Right on that, I know that, for, for DDP, that you all are working with on a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar, um, facility resiliency plan?
Yes.
And you helped us with the transformed grid, six two hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
From the county, and, well, you all aren't doing that, but they've got their engineers aside, and they're doing some, some modeling, and some storm water upon, upon that.
Correct, and they've opened up, as far as transformed grid systems as well, so we're hoping to leverage that, uh, specific projects are identified and going to pass through that as well. So we're trying to, trying to have every resource we can for funding these projects after they get obviously planned and then moved through design, so. The, the supplemental appropriation, maybe it's going to be your best bet funding, if you're chunking these, uh, during Hurricane Ian and Fiona, supplemental appropriation for five communities. Identifying twelve projects, those five communities, where the, uh, secure roughly a hundred and sixty-five million in funding for this program, so. Um, it's, it's normally, uh, you know, that program had about five hundred million dollars in it, this one has one point six billion. It should be a little bit more competitive in this program, is what we're thinking. Uh, but we still think that, you know, based on what the city is seeing from an impact perspective of Milton, that should qualify for, uh, you know, generally the criteria that we're looking for.
Right, which program are you talking about, or an elevator, you say the program?
No, it's a, it's a supplemental appropriation, uh, for, for Milton Colleen and Hawaii wildfires. Uh, I think it's SOVI, I think is what they refer to, because of the appropriation. But it's, it's a federal program where money is passed down to DDP and administered through SRF. And so during Hurricane Ian and Fiona, it was called SOVI, according to the first of us, um, but it's a hundred percent grant only, uh, it's passed down due to disaster relief appropriation, and, uh, you know, it's meant for specific situations. like what you guys faced here.
Can you consider water elevate that's just come into a, that you're wearing? Um, I don't know if there are.
I am to some degree, but from what I understand about Elevate Florida, that it's more specific for homeowners, if I'm not mistaken.
I can address that, because we have means with the county. Elevate Florida has to be initiated by the homeowner, not the city. They're the ones who have to apply and Elevate Florida will, if we qualify, will allow seventy five thousand dollars, or seventy five percent of either purchase of the property or elevator. So Elevate also has acquired the property, so that's within that program. The problem for Lake Ellen is that it's means hefted in reference to income, so some of the properties that were affected here in Lake Ellen may not qualify based on the incomes of the individuals. So it is a program that is geared at low, low income individuals because it comes from HUD, the housing development, um, and so that application is open, but we need to, when I set that information out to a couple of homeowners that were here in Lake Ellen, to make sure that at least get themselves registered and into that. Now where it gets complicated is then, is the, if they get eligible and it gets passed through another level, then at some point they'll come back and either, they've gotta come up with twenty five percent, find somebody else who would, which aspects some people will lead to term nonprofits or the local organization, and that may be the decision if they qualify and get that level, decide on what role that has. And if it worked that way, then the city would end up owning the property, a home would be taken down and forever, nothing would ever be built back on that place, but it is, that is a program that has to be initiated.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I'm so glad that you asked, because I've been wondering, I've been wondering, sorry guys, I've got a low voice. Um, I see that we've paid your company up to about seventy five percent of what we get from your, okay, is that correct?
Depends, because the payments are different areas, what they mostly have been paid for was the copper and lead line, of which we also got a two hundred thousand dollar, um, SRF from the state, so you'll see the invoice out, but you don't see the, the, the compensation side of that, so most of the bulk of their payment had to do with the copper and lead line service that was done during the water meter replacement. There've been some other invoices that have come in related to the stormwater, so it kind of break down on specifically what bill that is. Some of that, while we're paying it out, is being offset by the, the SRF, um, a hundred fifty thousand, uh, that came in terms of that.
Is there any way that the commission can get information on like what's happened here, because I'm a little behind on what's happened, because when I looked at the budget, I see seventy five percent based on what we had registered and what's been used. And I, I'm assuming these models that you gave us, that was paid out of, part of that seventy five percent, um, but have we actually, it doesn't sound to me, but correct me if I'm wrong, have we actually identified areas that the work needs to be done in and done quickly, when going to start contracting with people to come in to start doing work, for repairs and prepare for the next season, which is quite a long list?
Yeah, that's the work. Yeah, so, so the, in regards to that, um, so areas have been identified, uh, as far as planning projects to see where that movement of water takes place, that is a work in progress, which is supposed to be completed June, the middle of June. Um, as far as, as contracting to then go and, and you work on those projects, those projects still have to move through design, that one's identified, and as of right now, they do, will need to be funded as well, and so that's kind of, I guess you could say, step two in the process, is this, you're in planning phase right now, once the projects are identified, we work to get them funded, and then once they're funded, you move them through design and eventually construction, so.
How long do you think it would take to get them through the sign?
They do.
You're looking at July, August, March.
It depends on, on, uh, what the project is specifically, but for, for it to be designed by, you know, I would say July or August, I would probably say it's not achievable, so.
So, again, correct me if I'm wrong, we may not have a project even started until we're in mid hurricane season or after the next turn.
Eventually, yes.
That's what I'm talking about, okay. I have really great concerns, you know, with the Teddy Fly, I rode around the city, especially in one area where a ditch had been, you know, and a culvert had been put in, and the culverts covered in water, I guess it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, but I'm not quite sure when I see the culverts and fish are swimming all over from the top of the culvert, you know, I have great concerns because we had a bad storm that come through a couple of days ago, the water rose, you know, and it's a bad situation for the property owner, and then we've got at least ten other property owners that are in the same situation. So it looks to me like, like we're not even probably gonna start a project until after the next hurricane season is over.
I would say not until next hurricane season's over, but once they're identified, we'll have a much better idea on what the timeline would look like for design and construction on it, but once again, I think one of the limitations, you know, that we, we need to look into is that they will need to be funded as well, and so we can't fund them until the planning is completed on them, and we can't pay for design, we can't pay for construction until we secure funding for them, so.
Has our master plan helped at all in the, when you're playing?
It has, but the master plan for the problem areas that you faced in Milton, um, it didn't identify any solutions to those problem areas. And so the, the facility plan that we're gonna be building off of is going to address the problem areas that you saw, which is based on the modeling you see on the last page.
What is it?
And, uh, but the master plan previously did have the projects that, that we have immediately facilitated in the water.
Well, somewhere we do have projects.
You do.
Or projects.
You do, yeah.
If I had to, to look at those projects, some are eighty percent completed, some are maybe forty percent completed, I didn't get far enough to give it, but, so I know some projects have been started, which is not all of them completed, and in my mind, I was thinking if you had the model of, of the master plan that we could be looking at, all right, we've got one project seventy five percent complete, is it workable or doable, and can we start working at least on something to get it completed?
Jim, did you have any projects based on the master plan or design or third one?
Maybe just contact?
Yeah, so they're, they're, they were through.
If they were engineered out to rain, they would just contact.
Yeah, there was no design work completed on, so they would still have to go through design and then have to go through construction as well. And, and.
When I was set a project, like on one of completed, so I don't know what the terminology is.
Yeah.
Did the design just project complete its, not design or anything like that?
Yeah, there's literally three steps in construction projects, so planning would be the first step, essentially identifying projects, uh, second step is designing that project once it's identified, and then the third step is construction. And so the master plan documents have been through planning phase step one, but those projects that were identified in the master plan didn't identify any of your problem areas that were, uh, they didn't identify any of the problem areas that we saw in there.
So we're really not much further ahead?
We're much further than we were back in November, but as far as, you know, the steps in the progress, we still have a decent modelizing process as well, so.
I could add too, for the commission, uh, this was an email I got, um, from Morgan French, she works with, um, Ryan, um, she was updating on, um, the work they're doing for us in, in Tallahassee, um, we're one of the few cities that some of our requests have made it through to me. Um, the House has, not a lot of money, but a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred, and the Senate has been for two hundred and twenty five thousand on stormwater, so the two of the House and Senate, they get recognition to decide what that number raises, so, we'll talk about the City Hall later, but I'm gonna have that in there, um, but that's also gone through for budget recommendation, the House has had a hundred and eighty seven thousand five hundred, the Senate has for three hundred and seventy five thousand. We're one of the few cities that both the House and the Senate portion of their projects could at least make the point of reconciliation.
Are those the findings that you put through, um, with, and with Representative Hornby?
Yes, these are, these are, Florida, Florida, these aren't federal.
But they were for studies and planning, correct? Hopefully they were written.
But, but then if those were City Hall, they'd have some.
Not studies and planning, because it says studies and planning, so.
And, and I did get an email from Congressman Mills' office, I think it was a week, week and a half ago, and they just opened up their, their portal and got that on to Morgan with his office, and so, we're looking to do that, but even as it comes out of the House, we gotta remember Lake Ellen was awarded about eight hundred thousand dollars a couple of years ago, and then the governor vetoed, so, I mean, getting it through the House and the Senate doesn't necessarily win, it's what the governor does at the end of the day, and with the climate in Tallahassee, Washington, the cuts and going on, you know, we have to hold our breath, but the fact that we made it as far as we have and some others didn't, you know, I'd love to see that.
You're actually cut every, it wasn't just.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, but ours was specific, and they said we had a skin.
I met with Hornby on Tuesday, and, um, he did say that there are those things that are in the House that are moving, uh, forward, um, we also met with, uh, Senator Lee and Senator Wright, uh, the benefit of getting in the, in before these particular sentences is that you have their aides that can continue to dive off with, because the aides are really the ones that's moving things around, so we did have some, I think some very positive conversations with them, and hopefully they'll, uh, continue those conversations.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, you know, the, the supplemental appropriation funding that's coming out, you know, in regards to planning, you traditionally, if you're awarded funding for that program, you have to use facility plan in relation to it in the same format that we're doing your current facility plan, so hopefully when that funding is released, it's generally released pretty quick, and you guys will be having a curve in regards to implementing that funding through design and then in construction, so, you know, we, we're on pace with, we're doing everything that we can to keep on pace with, you know, what we promised at delivery back in November, um, and then we'll keep to, to try to track forward as fast as possible for you, and so as projects are identified, try to find funding and then equally get through design and construction, so we totally understand that the urgency from the community.
Well, that's my, that's my concern.
Yeah.
I know you came in after the fact, this thing's been worked on, it's been chewed up, spit out, worked on again, but it's time now, you know?
Yeah.
When you walk around and you see people's homes, their yards are flooded, even if there's no rain, they can't walk in their backyards because it's a hunt, it's just the groundwater's so high, and they cannot continue to live like this. And I, like I said, I understand you came in kind of on the tail end of it, started reworking things, but we're, we're at a point now that we've, we've got to move, that it's urgent, and I'm sure we're not your only clients, but I wish you were.
Well, and, and once again, we completely understand, but we also have to make sure that the work that we turn over to you guys is correct as well, so we're doing everything we can to fast track it within time, we have to make sure that the, the projects that we're identifying, the work we turn over to you, is an actual solution to the problem, so we totally understand since the urgency, we're right there with it, you know, we definitely, uh, are moving as fast as we can, so.
When we first presented whoever you worked with, you know, I don't know her name, I've only seen her twice, she said, she said eight months.
Yeah.
For the climate, oh, and I wasn't satisfied with that already, so, y'all started the eight months.
As, as much as I would love for us to be on a fast track and do this a lot faster, our biggest hole up is funding, we don't have the massive funds that other municipalities have, and we're, we're relying a lot on grants and SRF funds and stuff like that, which we have to go through the proper channels and it takes time to get, but if there's any way that anything could be done more aggressively to make things happen faster, I think us as a commission and those citizens would be very appreciative of that, because I'm tired of us being behind the eight ball, I wanna get us in front of it.
You know, we, we completely understand, I mean, the fastest thing we can do from a fast track perspective is going after the appropriation funding, so, you know, that's something that we've worked very diligently for, uh, you know, if it does get on a main hearing, you know, that's something that we're gonna have to turn around very quickly, generally within three period to get it on there, uh, we're ready to do that, team's working on it, um, if, if it's in August, obviously it's a little bit further out, you know, we, we're not sure which one's gonna be on hand or release that information, but that's, that's the thing that we, we could, you know, would be a potential game changer for this process is, you know, some help from that, that safe appropriation for the supplemental appropriation.
Are you aware of any temporary measures that we can take in the interim while we're waiting for permanent solution, or have any temporary measures been identified, is there, uh, have we looked into, I know you, you said something about, um, how they to, the different areas, we're trying to identify those, and so where are we in that process? Is there a temporary Band-Aid that we can put on this while we're weathering the next storm?
We'll have a better idea on this probably toward the end of the month, um, once we work through where the water can actually be pumped, it'll hold it, uh, but as of right now, we, we don't have as identified where within the community can hold additional water right now, and that's all part of the modeling that you're working on, a little step.
So, um, with that being said, once those areas are identified, is it, um, how do we, is it, are you handling, sorry, my brain is going a million miles now, I'm trying to think of all of the ways to get this going, um, are you the person or the, the company that's going to handle the permitting for that and fast track that, or how does that process work so that we can be prepared?
Traditionally, with, with pumping, we go to an emergency plan once it's identified, and so depending on where we be pumping to, um, we would work with the, the administration to, uh, potentially facilitate the permission from to that location, so.
Okay.
Whether it's a reserve, you know, just depends on where we go to, to identify with that.
Okay, and then are you, are you convinced to secure funding for that portion as well in addition to the other appropriation plans that we're going after?
There are programs that we can secure with them since it's identified, so that has, has a contingency as one of those, um, and so we'll work, you know, diligently to try to like, so, that's traditionally the way it would work, is we try to find funding for projects, as we give, no matter what they are, probably.
And so would it be fair to assume that we would have somewhat of an update by our next meeting?
Um.
On that portion, or could we request that, um, and see where we are in practice?
We can try, not by your next meeting, we'll do it after, yeah. And then by the July meeting, obviously, we can, we can also have this.
Okay. Please do.
Do you have a?
Hello, my name is Derek, we're here on 3511 Avenue, and so I've been affected by the stormwater situation in terms of, um, the, the Lake Ellen was drained basically into. And so I've been affected by this stormwater situation since that, the Lake Helen drained basically into my property. And so what the city did is they dug a culvert that was there from many, many years ago. And so allowed the water to flow before the hurricane in August. They, I would say illegally re-did a ditch on that property. And so my, my thing for the, the commission would be if they provide any solutions, make sure that you have the right to take action and not just do it on another people's property without permission, so.
Thank you.
Because, I mean, so now I have a cement head wall and I have a culvert that literally is on my property and without my permission. And so I'm, I've started to take action, the city asking for public records of how that was even allowed to happen. So definitely a person pertaining to stormwater. On that note.
I know.
Um, now, you should have some cards because just come up there and fill out a card and wait, we can have the records. That's the one thing that was asked of me before, is to step up. You're on the piano, go there. I wanted to hear, I wanted to hear the engineer speak before I had anything to say. Okay, one of you can come up and speak right now while the elements go in that. You were up first, come, sir. And just give us your name and make sure we get it from you.
I'll get it.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Your name and address.
Uh, thank you very much. So I'm K O, K O with 190 Cloud Avenue, where the Cloud Avenue off of Lake. So, uh, so the problem with us is the same, instead of building, everything dumped onto our property. So my main question is everybody has the same thing, the water's dumped onto all of our properties. My concern is, is there anything that I can do myself now? And once I wasn't start moving things around or I started bringing any kind of rock or anything, it affects my neighbors. So I'm very concerned about not affecting my neighbors, but at the same time, all I have to do, that little sprinkling the other day, it flooded my property. And the property on Cloud, it comes down Cloud, off Lakeview, all the way down onto the property. From New Cliff, it comes down both ways, down New Cliff and then onto our property. We have a real, for any, for any way it comes through. So just like everybody else, I know everybody has a couple of more than I just have. But my question is, can somebody come out and look at it to give us some ideas on what is needed? I might go wait, I mean, how many, seven months, eight months, nine months, it's taking these people another year. They, and they don't know for sure. And it's all about funding, you know? So I feel like what I need to do is go and do something myself. I just don't know.
The other thing that, that we are, that we're all flagging right now is that the, the water level table is much higher than it has been in years. So what we would have had a rain that would have permeated into the ground, the water table is so high that it doesn't go anywhere.
You're right.
And that's one of the things that, that we're going to have to address, but also going to have to live with until that time comes around.
Yes, we're on Lake Cloud. So we're on Lake Cloud, Lake Cloud comes up and my back hill. I mean, again, my real dead water problem. So, but my main question is, is there anybody who could come out, hey, look, and say you can do this right now? I want to put some rock down in my driveway. I don't know if we make a fridge drain on my driveway that would help around the neighbors. But we are the lowest on Cloud coming down.
Could you fill that out for me?
I'll.
Um, I've been up in your neighborhood and talked to a couple of your other neighbors and everything. And they have some ideas there, they're on up, but most are waiting for the modeling.
That's right.
Program to get done to see if their modeling addresses the issue. If not, then we can add, have added into there. Because you're in that same area where Lake Pearl lives and actually needs to be cleaned out because it's clogged up with invasive plants. And needs to be cleaned out.
And it's about the money and it does what we're really available right now. So we could be wasting time. My question is, what we do as residents can off our whole properties out and again, not affect the neighbors. We had to jump in and speak while you have, he put a pump down, well, that pump came down the street, came onto our culvert.
Yeah.
So everybody's trying to be awesome and do, and I've been the same thing, but I'm.
Even, even the city, we have to abide by the state law. And the state law says you're not allowed to flood over people's apartments. Yeah, so we are looking.
I may, I may all just come out, I may do it, maybe all come out and look at it.
We, we are looking at possibly, I believe that we can run a pump from the Lake Pearl area down Lake Pearl to the creek that goes out to Beet Creek, can't we? Isn't that something we do in an emergency situation if we get too much water?
We've never done it, but if it did be done, we actually have all the permitting and all the pumps all out there.
We'd have, we'd have to go through all the permitting questions.
And we have, I mean, that actually doesn't go much up in the department. But like I say, I could just come as a resident, I can do temporarily open out what we get there in my.
Yes, that, that can be very difficult. I, I recall the one, the floods, just to hand it to her.
Okay.
Um, where a family had actually pulled, went and spent money to buy three hundred bags of dirt, plastic bags. And they made them basically a mold around their house. They weren't sandbags, they were dirt bags, plastic, so it actually made a wall. The gentleman's come before us before that the, the house was just flooded. So to make decisions on your own, I, I, you know, we are now probably in, we, coming through the, the worst natural disaster that the city has ever faced. We don't have a predicate as to what we can do, what we should do, what is done before. We're all pretty much at the whim of nature. So we're trying to work ourselves with the best that we can. So, yeah, we, we're going to learn some things that we probably could learn a long time ago. But right now, we are, you know, dealing with today, not yesterday, what's going to happen tomorrow is actually a part of our, the plan to try to avoid it. Yes. All right, you had your card up. Oh, come on.
Okay, thank you.
Thomas Martucci at 261 East Michigan Avenue. My vocation is smart for real estate, I'm in development, I've dealt with water management district plenty on my own projects. The way, by the time they do their engineering, their planning is not going to happen. They're, they're not going to have anything ready to go. We're not doing any projects before the hurricane season. So I can guarantee that's not going to happen. Which then really puts emphasis on what are we doing for emergency pumping application? When I sat up in October, I said, look, everybody's flooded, we see the pumps down I four. I understand we're going to have a hard time getting an emergency pumping application approved to send water downhill. Well, here we are in April. Everybody downhill has gotten their relief, there should be capacity. I don't know, that's your role as a, as an engineer to design this. I admit, I'm a little disappointed, I could hear on this side too, the disappointment that we're this far in and we've got the modeling done and we've got problem areas. But we didn't give one example of a problem area. I can tell you where there is one, it's Lake Harlem, which I, I believe, not the engineer here, you've got a bunch of them on the bathtub. That's what lock everything up, you look at those models and it just shows the bottom. So I'm going to get through my points because I know I have limited time. So I, I'd like to see, knowing that we're not going to get any of these projects done, but we are at least trying with an application to the same town Water Management District for an emergency pumping. Get it out to the preserve, my brother lives out on Lone Star, it's dry, guys, there's room. I've never seen his pond that low. And we've had a drought-like first quarter, praise God, praise God, we've had a drought-like first quarter. That ditch that Mr. Mears talked about, it was fully filled with vegetation, native soil, whatever, the earth that put it back. And I know it was in operation years ago. I went on vacation after Ian and I came back to a lake that was over a foot higher or a few feet higher. Why? Because it didn't come through horizontal percolation, it came through somebody opening up a pitch and letting that water run right into my property. Where it's, where it's continued to run and it's continued to flood his property. So I'm upset about it and especially the more I learn about it. Horizontal percolation, not one person in front that I know of from that engineering group has been on my property.
Yes.
And I've got it in modeling, I've got it, I've got the high water mark, just like we have on a bridge. I've labeled it, I've laser measured it, I know exactly where that water mark was in order to stay. So for the record, you can write this down. We've drained twenty-one and a half inches in that five-month period, I think it's five months to the day that hurricane hit, actually. Twenty-two, one and a half inches is all that lake has drained. In five months and a drought-like first quarter, that should, everybody's here is, who's concerned is rightly concerned. That lake is four feet higher, Lake Harlem. It's, it's not Lake Helen, because Lake Helen comes to Lake Harlem, we eat it. Lake Harlem is four feet higher today in April than it was prior to last year in April. I've got photographs, I can prove it, that's easy. We're not even going to get into how much lower it was during the Ian, it's about eight and nine feet. Last thing I want to talk about is Michigan Avenue. I see a lot of people coming through now because they know it's dry, I understand that. I love the bikers coming through, I love the walkers coming through, it's good to see old faces. We got all the cars turning around and all that, I get it, you know, you can't stop people from, who can't read, and I say that to be funny. But they just don't, they're more interested in their time and how our bank signs. My request for all the things that we're talking about is to please keep that road closed, please keep those millions there. You guys were kind enough to approve that, I still thank you to this day because you did that. I got gas in my house when I was running out. I have four children, my wife homeschools. We were able to get the commercial support services we need, except the trash, nobody still picks up the trash, I still haul that out, so. No big deal, I can look at that. But please keep the road closed, that's now a one-lane road where those millions went. Those cars went flying around that corner and I can't tell you, already I hit people head on, you know, we're going slow here, okay? But I'm just trying to get to my house and my neighbors who, two of them are out here, they don't even be facing cars doing thirty miles an hour on that corner head on. And if you look at where the millions are, it's about a fourteen-inch drop. So that's, this is dangerous, this is dangerous. So my request is, leave it closed, those millions are our, our, our bridge, if you will. If we, if, and I hope God that we don't, hopefully God mercy on us, that we won't have another hundred-year storm like that. If we get anything close to it, to be honest with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And in all reality, that road should still be closed, so traffic both ways. But if only residents only allowed to go in there because the road bed is unstable yet because of how saturated it's been over the years. Because of the pine tree on the way. So if we can close that road and all of the.
Yeah, just informationalize this word, that if we're on a problem, they were, there's a brush. Um, they were illegally pumping, it was actually pumping probably from someone, because they're legally pumping down to Lake, um, it's a little pond on Cloud. They were illegally pumping from there down to his property. Of course, we go back, there's some complaints against their property at the current time. Once complaints started coming in, I actually think it was his name, they complained, he shut it off from them opening the pump. For that issue, but they were definitely dumping water from that apartment, to his house. And as far as the lake thing, that culvert, that culvert's been there way before my property. Because two thousand and four, I mean, we went down to the fire department and cleaned it out to open it back up. That's naturally ran those the way it came.
It hasn't been open for twenty years.
Yeah.
It has, I opened it in two thousand and four. How many? So what's twenty years ago?
Next Tuesday, Matt is here.
Literally, I'm coming out of North High Street. I appreciate everyone being here again and voicing their opinions. And we cannot, again, we can't go backwards, we can only move forward. And like she said, this is a sense of urgency and I am glad to hear that people are really wanting to get this done. But when coming, we wanted to pump, we got, we went into the city, we got permission to pump down the road, we got a pump, we got hoses. But then we were told that we couldn't do that. So I don't know why we couldn't pump now, like he said. Take care of that water. There's an empty piece of property next to my house and it is in a trust, I'm not looking for it, but it's in a trust. Get that though out there, dig a deeper hole, water can go in there. You know, that's one thing you can do. I am, we still have a lake, it's going down, but it's still a lake. And the culvert that is there is still, you can see the water in it, the little drain. And the culvert is in, it shoots out to a pond that's back behind. When I moved there, when did I move there, two thousand and eighteen? There was a little bitty pond, little bitty pond, and there was a culvert that supposedly is not legal to be there. And I have to give work at home for that. So you're doing, not you per se, but predecessors, people before you came in and did these things. And they should all be looked at, they should all be taken care of. And since the emergency should have happened again so many years ago, what we need to move forward, we need to move forward quickly. Because if it swerves again, like it does, the water's going to be in my house this time. I'm glad my neighbors are back in it, but really, find it somehow, either like we said before, either try to pump the water out or take it down the road where he said.
We, we were looking at doing that and, and I'm going to tell you now, one of your current commissioners stopped it.
Well, that's why he's not a commissioner.
No, they're sitting on the board today.
Who stopped it?
The commissioner called St. John's. St. John's called me and that stopped and negated pumping.
Well, we didn't get a chance because we had to fix the.
Well, but, but the other is, it's not a city pond, it's a private pond. So you have an issue even beyond some of the other areas because it's not a city pond.
No, it's not.
We don't maintain it, that should be maintained by beyond the.
I don't know where the culvert came from then. There's a, there's a culvert, you can't see in there.
Hit the road.
No, because there's a, there's a, a drain.
It comes on the road.
Right, and it goes down back and it goes into that pond. And it is a private pond, but it, I don't think that pond was legally put there to get me, so there's no permits for it.
I, I can't tell you that, but it's not, it's not a city pond, so it wasn't even, I'm not arguing.
No, no, no.
It wasn't even on the stormwater master plan. So that wasn't even looked at a few years ago, we all think that because it's not a city pond and we wouldn't work on right.
Well, it's not about the pond, it's about the water that comes up into here, our homes. And floods our neighbors' homes and floods their home and floods everybody else's home and. I know it's a, you call it a national disaster, whatever you want to call it, but this is ours. We live there. You want to talk about people going down the street? Yeah, people did that at our yard too, at our house when it was, when it was flooded. People didn't care. And water would just, we shove into the houses, but we don't care. And people have to do more, this town has to care more about its citizens, about who we are, why we live here. That's, that's all. I thank you very much.
Thank you. If you would fill out your card, if I can respond.
You're already good.
No, trust me, we're good. Hold on, I think, go look at me.
You're already ready. Before she gets out there, I'll respond to the free dish, while you see who passed it.
Uh, actually, let me just stop right here. We are taking public comments and generally with public comments, it's not a back and forth.
This is, that, excuse me, when it was.
Making a point.
Point of order.
The point of order is.
No, the point of order with public comments was earlier, we're discussing an issue on stormwater. There is allowed to be back and forth communication.
It's not on the agenda.
Yes, it is. It's number six A is what we're still on.
Okay, six A has public comments that are submitted. We're now letting people come up as a.
And they want answers from us. And this is what we are allowed to respond to. I know you don't believe in the, in the.
Don't come to us.
Rules and protocols and stuff, so let's.
Um, before this gets out of hand, before this gets out of hand.
This is the problem.
Um, this is a meeting that we are here to hear from citizens on a normal basis. There were no blue cards up here, none. I am taking people because of the urgency of this situation. This can get out of hand and should because we've all got the same problem. This can get out of hand, and it shouldn't, because we've all got the same problem. If there was an easy solution, it would have been done. We're actually trying to work through to get to the rest of the city's business, not just stick on one point. So, this is...
I'm, I'm sorry, but you are not allowing us to speak, and you're not giving us answers. So how can you possibly move on to something else, that you cannot even give us answers? You let me speak, I was a part of the town. I was a part of it, and I know it's on the agenda, I've been a part of these things for a long time. But you are not giving us answers that we need to hear, we are citizens of this town. What more do you, you wanna hear from us, but you don't wanna hear from us?
No, please.
No, that's not, that's exactly what you're saying, that's exactly what you're saying to us.
Would you, would you, would you please? Okay, you gotta let me get you. Where are you, your card? I'm sorry. Thank you.
It looks like it's exploring in the, I, I'll be quick, I just, I think that, um, Sir Tucci brought up a good point, in that maybe the pumping that one of the commissioners called on Saint John's or something, if they shut it down, I'm not saying we can go through the right channels for that one, but if we can go through the right channels, and maybe get with Saint John's to approve some pumping, and that's a viable option, that's a great thing you could do immediately. So I don't know who would have the will reach out, is it a commissioner, is it, at the city hall? Who goes to Saint John's river management and goes through the channels?
We deal with that, and they're the ones who called me to say that a commissioner stopped it, called you to get the pumping stopped. And when the process was looked through, they did say, you, you are not allowed to pump. From one person's property to another, it's a catch. They're, they're not allowing that process, so they would not have issued a permit to pump. They got called because they heard who they're going to.
Okay, there are many companies.
And they were stopping.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cuthbert?
I just, you said we had to pull a permit, but if we got permission from the landowner to pump water, we still have to pull, pull a permit?
Oh, I'll let you speak, then you speak.
Your hand. Ladies, the only thing that I wanted to get a, a lawyer to say, is what I have to do, with that gentleman right there. What happened with Orange Avenue, so people understand. Only reason, and that Orange Avenue is only wanted for, to give them access to their house. That was the idea of doing Orange Avenue. But I wanna make sure that everybody understands, that road is not wide enough to open, and so you've got two corners coming one way or another. That's not, that should be not closed until it gets finished.
Yeah, I agree. We have, we have no intention of opening it.
That sounds better, I like that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Sir, your question?
No, we can do this.
Your question, your question, let him go.
We, I'm pretty biased, because I don't, I don't...
Come up to, come up to the point, do this.
Yeah, do your name, can you offer like a card for you?
So, i- if, if we got permission from a property owner, say I got a pump raised, and I'm telling you, sir, go ahead and pump your water into my property, I have to pull a permit for that?
With Saint John's River Water Management?
Why, I'm, I'm putting it in the same, I'm not doing anything to Saint John's.
Saint John's controls the state waters.
Okay, great, but this isn't state water, I, I don't...
You're saying with me, Saint John's is the one who regulates that, we don't.
Well, then I would love to know the person who called, because we had a great agreement, and we could have outhouses, and my neighbors, the Jettsons, we're about thousands of dollars, and we pump, not an ounce of water.
Please ignore your voice to me, because I must not...
Me, that's why I don't speak, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a waste of me.
Okay, um, showing that shot. Okay, you're on, so, um, who was the commissioner that called and stopped?
I'd like the commissioner to yield the case.
That's all I want, thank you.
May I, I was trying to go ahead...
Was it you?
Say, that, yes, that was me. The laws of the water, the city went out and started putting out pumps to pump water that was flooding other people's properties. No permits had been pulled with Saint John's water management. It's illegal, you cannot, and the homeowner who's allowing the water to flow into somebody else's property could be in trouble. But we had pipes out there, we had pumps out there, and we were about to flood other properties. We've got to do it legally, we've got to do it right, we've got to do it right for all citizens. Because the, the property owner who lives, I don't know, in Japan, or wherever he lives, said it was okay, that's right, but we had to have the other parts completed to, to pump. That would have been a great area to do it. However, our city staff obviously didn't know to get in touch with Saint John's water management to ask if we could do this and move the water flow. It hadn't been stopped until we could get it done legally. I'm not afraid to say that I'm the one who did it, to protect other citizens as well.
Thank you. Uh, on that note, where the dons passed that point, we're actually to the, uh... Hello, we're actually, like, six A.
Six B.
Six B, uh, City Hall's mold remediation background survey. Late twenty-one, mold was detected in the second floor of City Hall's, and as a result, City Commission closed public access to the second floor in February of twenty twenty-three. The issue was the city conducted mold testing on four occasions, October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, February third, twenty twenty-three, March eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and March sixth, twenty twenty-five. Results indicated an increase in mold score count between initial and the March twenty-third testing. However, the most recent test on March sixth showed a reduction in mold scores, potentially due to roof repairs that allowed the building to begin drying out. But despite this improvement, professional advice confirms that the mold will not fully resolve on its own, and remediation is necessary. Okay? Anyhow, if anybody wants to speak up.
Mayor, I'll add further to that, um, they also gave a, a recommendation, um, in reference to... Actually, this was done in several stages, we had a testing company come in, they test, and they send them off to an independent testing agency. In your packets, you have a copy of the four tests from October of twenty-one, um, March of twenty-three, um, March ninth of twenty-three, November one of twenty-three, all those testings were done prior to my, my arrival, and then the one we did on March sixth. So the March sixth ones do show, you know, while the problem is still upstairs, but that the, the, the score count, um, was going down, and they're below at least what are the suggested guidelines, because there's no official federal standards in reference to upgrading the, the mold. And, um, what, uh, was recommended is that there needs to be a thorough cleaning and treatment of all the HVAC systems, the air ducts, supply and return vents with anti-hypochromial solution, and that means dismantling and taking them outside and, and doing treatment in, in terms of that. In addition to treating the walls, the covers, and what have you. And then the other step of that is the removal of the ceiling in the second floor, in the commission chambers, and, um, removing that out, checking what's up, buying there in the attic and what have you. And then, uh, um, in cleanup process, a new roof would go in, so you'd have a, a new roof, you'd have all the areas cleaned, um, you'd have the HVAC system, you know, completely sanitized and cleaned out. And, uh, phase one, um, the cleaning portion and the remediation is twenty-one thousand, eight oh eight sixty-six. And then phase two, the replacement of the ceilings, um, on the second floor, is thirty-six thousand, six seventy-seven. Total price estimated at fifty-eight thousand, five fifty-eight forty-one, and that deals just strictly with the mold. No other, no other issues with the building, no windows, windows, no other, um, construction.
Prior, um, you, I just wanna make sure, you, uh, you mentioned roof, which you meant...
He meant ceiling.
Ceiling, in the ceiling, the roof or the ceiling, in the chamber.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, and, um... Couple of years ago, um, surprises were gotten, they range anywhere from forty-eight thousand to almost two hundred thousand for the same prospect. Servpro was recommended to us by the company, um, that does, um, the testing, and then so it comes back valid or whatever, then they, they recommend either homeowner or business or whatever, and go with that. There are other companies that do that, and we've got prices that range in that area, but if we want to get moving and expedite a process, I would ask the commission to, um, waive the bid process and allow us to go forward with, um, Servpro, and get phase one started and phase two started, so we could get that second floor completely done and available then for it to be remedialized again to the public and the commission for its use.
And that also cleans out all of that air falling downstairs to the main forecourt also.
All of that. And then, separate from that, Cookie and his committee working on the building or whatever, like, and I do have something I could, um, pass out, this is from former mayor Shutterwork, at least some initial work he did, involving, um, windows, um, he took a window down in the library, used it as a test window, and, and kind of refurbished, rebuilt, and, and restored. And what I've added out to you now, again, this is separate from the mold, but that he's identified at least in, in his review, twenty-two, um, windows, ten on the second floor, twelve on the first floor. And, um, this is the sills, and all, uh, twenty-two would be an estimated of about nine thousand dollars. And then four, um, bottom window stashes to be restored, um, would be another three thousand, would be looking at about nine thousand dollars. You don't have to make it on that tonight, because this could be tied back into, I know, um, mayor's not here tonight, Cookie's working with them, and, um, Angelo is out of town this week, and these are the other construction aspects, so they would be coming back with some suggestions and ideas involving, um, the other needs that tie into this, because the longer your windows are leaking and sinking and water's getting in, you know, it's still bringing moisture into the building, and it's still rotting the wood in terms of there, but, but... While they do have an impact on the second floor, but they're not directly impacting the mold. That mold was due to the roof leak, and not thought for, I don't know, how many, how many years, five, a lot.
Jamie, can I ask something?
No, yeah, yeah, because you, yeah, you can drop it then.
Actually, a big problem is air conditioning that causes the mold, and we do it, a lot, we do it. But anyhow, right now, with Servpro giving me, I don't know, that couple weeks, it's not right now. And what he's talking about building is the most reasonable way for us to get rid of the danger in that building professionally, so we won't have to worry about it anymore. We won't have to worry about moving here, doing this, doing that, nothing else. Now, the windows, I talked to Mark this morning, and, uh, we have figured out the bad windows, the windows that are deep, or so forth, right? And this, it here, is for the windows that are damaged, and that we take care of that. Now, the windows, the other windows can be done in place with some other company or something, someday, but we don't need that done right now. He is quoted for the windows that we need to fix now. But we get Servpro, we can handle it, we've got lots to do, and then do windows, coming down home stretch, and we're a lot less than they can cost.
Uh, Cookie, before you, um, in our basement, um, of City Hall, is where the air handlers are, or if you give us, if me, uh, I think, what is the air handler?
Sorry, I should have said something about that. Angelo has an air conditioner guy who is wonderful, I mean, that's, he's great. And what we've already planned on doing, Angelo is gonna build platform out there, right outside where the dark, not the grass. Most people wouldn't go there, with the little corner right in there. Angelo is gonna pour slide in there, right outside of the ground, and then we're gonna move those three units from downstairs up there, set up on a deck, build a roof over it, and some walls and front doors that'll be available to come in and work on and everything else. But the big thing is with that, on getting up out of the basement, our job work, because we're gonna have to put some job work in, will be up higher, so we can go right into the building, and understand we don't have to pump it upstairs, or go upstairs. So that will cure another big problem. And also, I'm so excited, because let me tell you something, when you said million dollars, that's what we could do for nine hundred and fifty thousand. But anyhow, we're really coming down home stretch, but what we need on this is, one, two, three, four, five, go get this thing moving, so we can start using our village, safety, let's break that. Thank you.
The question that I, the question I, what I have is, um, how did the basement get flooded? Where did that water come from?
Came right down the steps.
Came right down the steps, so, uh, so we don't have a way to divert water getting in our basement?
Yeah, I worked, I worked with Jim last time.
Please do something.
And believe it or not, when they were, when they were pumping, I was pumping, I looked at it, I said to Jim, I said, man, we gotta put a longer hose on this thing, to get it outward in a low area. Now, I took the time to shoot the drains out there and everything else. All we have to do is that sidewalk, after the sidewalk, there's a big hump there. Come in there, like, put down a block tack, not a big project, come in there, a block tack, cut that down, so that water, instead of going to the basement, will come out and go in. That's the easy way out, and it'll be cheap to, we can do that. So that's a cure for that, we got two viewers here.
Okay, do you have, yeah, it's...
Yeah, I, just as we're going through this, and I, credit box in, um, when we were looking for records up in the, uh, the storage room, sitting here holding the economy, it's a request for construction proposal for phase two Lake Helen City Hall restoration. This is dated September tenth, two thousand and two.
Oh.
And that, this construction company sent a bid to be the project manager, okay? And that project fee was fifteen percent of the project, was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Fifteen percent of that is a one million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar project, so somebody at Lake Helen was talking about a million eight on that city hall back in two thousand and two. What happened to it, it got covered. So here we are in two thousand and twenty-five, talking about renovation of City Hall.
Well, what's crazy, to back him up on this, and I have to say, is, that was on trial, that roof was leaking five and a half years. Okay, I know it's five and a half years, Tony Troy and myself were about to check that and everything else. That was left leaking, that was a leak problem. Like, when they turned that, you know, the ceiling down, and, I mean, I've seen ones up there, that is a, is a problem, but they let this happen. And that proves, when he brought that on the way, I said, what? He said, do that, you think so? So I'm just saying, I'm saying, please, let's get, go on this whole project so we can get it done, and say, Helen is building safely? I'm getting too old, I mean, I was...
No worries, I'll be...
Yes.
And the last thing, our commission called the company, would not require any evacuation of the building. This could be done, they don't have to seal me upstairs, they wear the right uniforms, they bring the right equipment, and do that, because I asked, how would that affect, will it stir the air when we down? They said that they'll all be contained, so that we would not have to empty the building, we wouldn't have to set bases up or anything else before it could be done on this earth. So then we would not have to empty the building, we would have to set bases up everywhere else before it could be done on this area.
Are they gonna do the Surf, Surf Pro water test and put a crane with a big joint full of water dump on City Hall?
Like it never even happened?
Yes.
On the AC thing, between what, there's so many here from Surf Pro and what Angelo is saying that the AC guy, do they play hand in hand with each other?
Well, in this case, the only problem is Angelo, we're on three crews. And I met with Angelo and actually, him to dip, this guy is air conditioning guy. I already had talked to other people, but let me tell you something, after being with this guy in the bench, I was like, I mean, this guy, no, we still change, we were cheap. Like, we all have to create all them air conditioners to build it. No, all we have to do is rebuild that, clean them and rebuild them, and perfectly all of them, hillbore and change them.
So Surf Pro claims them, but.
Surf Pro's doing the, doing the duct work and stuff. And not the relocation of the home in case.
That, that, and, yeah, and.
Yes, I'd like to see that. I made a motion that we do what Jim suggested, waive the bidding process. If the job, what, all what he said, let's get door on this thing.
Is there any directions that you need? Does that enough for you to go?
The commission just needs to make that motion.
Go to second. Was it moved in second?
And my, my concern is, is Phase One and Phase Two, are we going Surf Pro for the cleaning and remediation? Or are we also going for the ceiling replacements of which Angelo had talked about doing?
Well, now, now he was talking about air conditioners.
I thought he was also talking about reconstruction.
That's downstairs, we're moving those air conditioners up, because that's nothing to do with safety problem.
Surf Pro has two different divisions, and they have a construction division, so.
Yeah, they restore, they restore things.
They're gonna do what we got here.
So do you need any, any directions besides for a free?
If this motion passes, we'll wait for their process and I.
The motion is using Surf Pro, though.
Yes.
So, we have another discussion before we go. Your comments?
Wait, what, I, I can't remember what I did before. So have you talked to Surf Pro?
Yeah, we went out several times, they called today, the new meeting was today, and I said, I'll have the meeting tonight, so tomorrow. So tomorrow, if I get a timeframe and normalization, you all will know that, we can get it done tomorrow. I appreciate it.
So one, so two, one more question, and we got the funding ready for this already?
Well, yes, what's, how it works, I mean, we will fund it, we will take it out of building maintenance, we'll go over budget. We're still in, um, March or April, in terms of there. So as the year goes on, other areas will come up, if we need to at the end, we'll do a budget motion. And you can take that money if it could be out of our, but right now, we don't have to do any motions or anything like that. We, we operate it out of the current budget, and then we'll just deal with it because it's kind of like the hurricane, you know, we're gonna have, you're gonna see a line item here in one month or so, it's gonna be half million dollars, okay? The good thing is.
Lucky for that one.
Well, I know, I just gave you some ballpark, we're there, but then the FEMA offset would come in at a hundred percent impact. So, no, we, that won't hold that up, we'll deal with the, I mean, we have the money, but we'll just deal with how we can properly allocate.
How long are we gonna allocate?
Let's take, let's take any consideration.
Are we, we're taking a vote, right now, we already had the session, so we don't do.
I said yes.
Zone three?
Yes.
Zone four?
Yes.
I said yes, and. Okay.
And plus that, we have two, two things going, that has, I believe that.
Thank you.
Let me just remind us, if we have thirty thousand dollars worth of audio equipment upstairs that we can get, hook it back up and start using too, if we want.
Yes.
It's worth it, I should set them going away.
Uh, audio, video?
No video, just audio.
Well, even if you have more presentation.
But we can use the video up there, whatever.
You could. Um. Now we're, it's sensitive. Does anyone that has anything that they'd like to pull out of either the minutes? Or the payment of bills? Or the, what is it, variance report?
Does it like to pull out A, B, and C?
A, B, and C, okay, so we take them one at a time. Who pulled the minutes, start with the minutes?
Let me go on, um, page sixty-three of the minutes, which is this spring, summer, twenty twenty-five city events. Um, this is listed, this, um, citywide garage sale is listed as a city event in the minutes. It was my understanding that this was not a city event, but only that the city was waiting the signage.
Correct.
But it's listed as a city event with Karen's name as the event's origin.
Normally, it means that Karen, we, we, it's a, it's a, it's a, she said it was a city event, she just said these are the things that are happening. She even mentioned an American Legion at, at conference events. She, she, she's listing the things that are happening in the month of April, so I wasn't saying it was a city event, so I just feel a touch of listening.
Okay, because I don't see American Legion on here, so, um. All right, as long as we know, or that people know that this is not a citywide event, because I was sent something from a couple of people in this town that was disgraceful on advertising the city event.
I thought it was hilarious.
I don't know, you would.
Yeah.
I, um, as long as the city is not, we claim ourselves as the gem, and it was really important, that's all I've got to say.
We're not reporting it, it won't be on Saturday.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
So, as, uh, do we take one at a time?
We might, we might move them.
Okay. Uh.
Make a motion and accept the minutes as a number?
Second.
Okay, move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye in favor, pass? No one, no? Okay, did we do the S? Oh, sorry. Acceptance of the bills, B. You have a point on that?
This is me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um. I think I ask this question about every month, we hired, um, I mean, what I was told, especially I had, Curry and Woodward. Um, with the understanding that we knew getting rid of PONs. PONs been around quite a while, and they were sent to retire Curry. When I came back with a question of why do we still have PONs, I thought there's still some things for them to do. How many more things do we have for them to do? Because again, and this is in March, and they got paid in February as well, it was eleven thousand dollars. And it just says engineering services group, because I can't believe it doesn't.
They are doing the CBDG project, the project on the kickback?
Yes, yes, yes.
So how long do we think that's gonna take?
I don't know, tomorrow, when we have a Zoom call with them, because we lost representatives for two months, and they came to know they were gone, so they lost two months of the planning process. So we've been putting pressure on them to get that done, because we have a deadline with the calendar, so I, we have a Zoom call with them tomorrow.
Which representatives were?
PON.
Elected, elected representatives or are they in country? Sydney?
No, with PON, to know, because they were supposed to be doing the plans, getting the bid package and what have you, and we thought we were ready to go in December.
Okay.
And then found out in February, the people handling that were gone, PON didn't, no different on.
Okay.
New people dealing with it are all in Atlanta, so they're, they're not forward to base, so we're looking to wrap up. And, and, and that is the last thing, we're not going forward with them on any of the other projects.
All right. Do you have anything else?
Well, with the bills paid, should I follow through with the variance?
Well, well, let's do one at a time, because it's important, it's separate, it's the parts, and we'll get to that.
Okay, well, then third part is, is, hold on.
Uh, let your variance report, she don't make it, she don't make it, she be talking about the budget.
Okay.
Variance report.
All right, so we, we take a vote on this, make a motion, we accept the bills paid report?
Second.
You move to move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
And any votes?
Did we just vote on the variance?
No, no.
No, I mean, it's correct, too. It's separate.
Okay, good.
So do you, how do you vote?
No.
No, one vote no, three, four, yes. Okay, now we're down to the variance reports. Uh, okay. I'll take this time, uh, as we have our budget, and then we have, uh, bills that we pay, and then we have variance. Whenever our, something goes over the budget, it's a variance. We, in this commission, I began to take the variance reports and to handle them separately. So if we don't wind up a year from now, six months from now, finding out that we went so far with the budget.
That's the right way to be able to see where we're standing. Um, what I'm seeing is, sorry. The, the variance report is for February. Our budget, bills paid is for March. And I'm wondering, are we supposed to get February variance report to join with the March?
No, they, they're, they're not, they're not related, the numbers don't, won't match yet. I told you guys in the very beginning that the way our meetings fall, and the way that the books close with that, they can't get us current month of March for this meeting. So we're, we, since day one we've done these, these reports have been one month behind. So this isn't new.
Bills paid?
No, the variance report is always one month behind, the bills paid in the current month.
Okay, so what you're saying here, um, I believe it has to do with the general fund budget?
Yes.
And financial impact as of February twenty-eighth, that we're two point three percent under budget?
Yes.
And our general funds?
Yes.
Can I ask why?
We're running under budget, which means we're outstanding.
We're saving.
I know, but, um, we don't have the option.
Well, those numbers will change every month.
Okay.
As of February, we're under budget, each month I give you a report on where we're at. So as long as it's under budget, I, I'm happy.
But it's for January.
One of the advantages.
Which is a good thing, which means then we may not, so when we need to come up with fifty thousand dollars for City Hall, we may have that in here because of the fact that we're under budget. We're spending less than what we thought we would at this point in the year, but just maybe things will happen to us.
What the, what the advantage is having this, if we, if, if the financial impact would show that we are ten points over budget, then that's a red flag, that we can kind of put the shift back.
I think the CDA can confirm that I was the one that kept pushing for this.
Well, yeah, well, we, that, that's why I'm kind of confirming it, because it's really your, 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 your major, that got to you.
I'm looking at two point three percent.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't spend that much, just.
I guess I should have said lower, but higher.
Okay.
Then. I've already talked about the seventy-five percent, so that's all I have.
Okay, so we have a motion on this?
Make a motion that we accept the variance report, second.
Motion move to second? Is there zone one?
Yes.
Zone two?
Yes.
Zone three? Zone four?
Yes.
And I say yes, we'll pass.
Can I just ask, why a no vote on the variance report, it's just something to report if we're out on the current budget? I, I, you have that mic, I'm trying to understand what it is you're voting against, so you can type something. But, so you want me to go over budget?
That's kind of like a ridiculous thing.
But, but I, but I'm ready to be voting in, I'm on a budget.
That's my vote, my vote stands.
So I understand that someone's no reason.
There is a reason.
We had a guy, we had a guy on meeting, and he had also known.
Okay, that's fine, which it means, it means stopping it.
Right, right.
So are you gonna stop doing consent agenda? Because you said before, because we can't do everything as a consent agenda, you have a point, you're going, so are you gonna stop doing the consent agenda? Does it miss everything somewhere?
Okay, um, now we're down to the, uh, A, B. Event application for Memorial Day tribute car show.
Where are you going?
Okay, I'm sorry, I had a circle already. With the review of the temporary CO for sidewalks at three fifty-two Lemon. Congratulations. They're not made for.
What we, uh, back with this house, got a temporary CO on Lemon, there was an issue about the sidewalk, you know, whether they build a sidewalk or, um, um, pay engine. And the question came down on, was there even enough riderway on, on Lemon for a sidewalk? So the commission asked that, um, we go do a survey. Survey was done, and the survey shows that, um, you don't have easement on the property on the north side of Lemon to accommodate a sidewalk. You can do a sidewalk, um, and the owner is, um, giving us numbers that, um, would be more than happy to sell you the strip. With a public sidewalk on his property for nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. And then the estimated cost of the sidewalk is, um, another eight thousand five thirty-six twenty-five. So nine and eight is seventeen, so the others are about eighteen thousand dollars if you want a sidewalk on the north side of.
No, because he'd be paying for the sidewalk.
Well.
He'd be buying his property, so it'd be a wash.
That's what we're looking at.
But, so there is, there, there is no riderway, um, on that side. The Lacoste property has reactivated their application, they're going through. If that ever gets to the level of PRDC and, and you all, um, there would prob, well, there would be a requirement of sidewalk on the south side of Lemon, um, on that property. And there is an upright way in, in terms of there. So the gentleman at, um, I think it's seven twenty-two Lemon, is that the right address? He's got a temporary CO, if we give him the CO, move in based on that sidewalk issue. So the commission wants a sidewalk on that side, Charlie, if I correct, the homeowner, you know, puts that there, and then we would want to compensate it for the nine thousand dollars in progress.
Now, that's just from the property line to property line, on his property, that's, that's not the rest of it.
No, then you got another, another two lots, that's, you're gonna end up with the same, same issue. Now, if you have a little better, more right away, if you're moving, um, west, um, excuse me, east, on, on that, but, um, we have a problem on, on the. but we have a problem on, on the, you know, going further, further west. So sidewalk on the north end may be a little more provocative or difficult. Maybe best to see what happens with the development that is being closed on the south side, since there is enough right of way on there, the sidewalk could just be on the south side. If that were to go forward.
I only got one thing to do to the sidewalk on the south side, you have to remove all trees. Every tree on there has to be removed. And if you go on the north side, you've got to buy everybody's property. Just to clarify, just one reason.
Yeah, so that nine thousand may be then three lots.
If they want to sell it the same time, if they want to sell.
And the south side, you said, as the property we get by that property, that would be three fifty-two or three fifty-one?
Three fifty-two is...
I know what he's, he's saying, he wants to sell it for... What's the fair market value?
He took that off of the most recent sales involved, about his property and the lot next to him, so he needed to come in using based on sales price, what he paid for his property, and then compare it to what's...
That may not be fair market value, what he paid for his.
Then, then you would enter kind of the domain, and then the law goes in his name. And you will pay a lot over the nine thousand dollars for the right of way.
And he's happy with nine thousand dollars?
It was his amount that he's invested.
That's what I, he, he brought in, brought some numbers and showed where he got them.
And then he has to pay for the sidewalk.
Which means, we will, we need to get the money to pay for the sidewalk.
Depends on how you apply safety into it, it's a great deal.
Yeah, I'm talking to Maddie here, and she's giving up property.
The south side has...
Has, so they're quickly buying. You've got the trees, unless the sidewalk somehow... I don't know, we have not had that much for design and all of that. He just handed us in the last week.
The, the south side? Most of the trees there are not like special trees, but you have one live on the nearest property right there that is a live. That would get in the way. The rest of them are actually, a few of them are old, old, old laurel oaks, water oaks, and a couple things down there. Probably you have is the one special tree down there, which doesn't mean you don't have it, but I'm just saying there is one live.
I have a card. And yeah.
I called the opposition, and he's not talking. Give you the numbers and the, the survey.
Yes, right. The mailbag from two ninety-one South East Road. I just want to make a comment that sidewalks are lovely, and they're important when we can put them in. But that road, the north part of that road is getting developed, there's some homeowners that are gonna be coming in. And since the survey shows we don't have property there to put a sidewalk in, I don't even think it's wise to discuss trying to purchase a piece of his property to put in a sidewalk, because the neighboring properties may not even want to sell. And to have a sidewalk that ends, it doesn't make any sense to me at all. I don't think it's something we should go discussing further. Let's just deal with it if we do on the south side of that road, and maybe somehow bring the dog around the sidewalks that are there and just move on. This is really kind of...
Quick fix? Yes, sir.
I, we're out of the dead end, and if anything, figures all out for anything else. And the gentleman at the meeting came to me and said, and he goes, look, I says, I have a contract. And I just hope my own side won't be a danger. I says, okay, and I'm in, we don't have a problem. Oh, I told him at that time, I says, we might be able to work out, you have to take the responsibility. And he was pretty mean. I said, well, we're gonna put the sidewalk in there for people to use, and there ain't nothing else, if somebody gets hurt.
I believe.
And then the liability's there, and he goes, you didn't have to tell me that. I said, well, okay, that could be possible, but let me explain something to you, in the contracting business, if Steve Costa, not that I don't know, Steve, he's cheap, but anyhow, but if they're gonna do a development plan on that property, okay, the only way I can see that of that is when they're doing concept, playing, putting, I mean, I'm on the fanny board, okay, then the thing would be, we'd have to put that in here, that they would have to cost it, put a sidewalk in here as part of their development plan. That's my suggestion.
Well, uh... Any comments?
Two questions, one is he's got a temporary C O in there, you need to be able to give the guy a permanent C O, since he's living in his house now for several months. So if we are not going to entertain purchasing property, and we focus on the south side, then I'd like to be able to go ahead and change his certificate of occupancy from... Hello? From, from a temporary C O to permanent C O, so we can close him off, and he's done.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
So I think the motion that we might have, and give, and then the lead, was last thing, his certificate of occupancy, so if it's completely legal, so I'll make the A R.
A motion? Do the second?
Could we restate that? I could not hear you at all, I'm so sorry. Could you, could you please restate that motion?
Yeah, I'm just making a motion that we go ahead and give the resident his certificate of occupancy, close that out, that's one thing on this plate.
Thank you.
We have a second?
A second.
Before we vote, I have the comments from the audience. Hearing them. Zone one?
Um, I have a question.
Yes, question.
For the city attorney. On what our policy says in reference to this property.
What policy you refer to?
The sidewalks, completely unplanned, I think, in reference.
The sidewalk, what you're asking about? Well, the issue here is that there isn't money in to have a sidewalk. That's the only issue with a sidewalk, it can't be put, because we put the right of way, and we don't have right of way, so we have to address that. Issue first, the requirement to have a sidewalk. And because the sidewalk issue wasn't resolved, he was allowed to move into the temporary C O. So the motion involves the temporary C O, that's why I know it's a permanent C O, and then the property decide, also, we just want to not do a way to require for a sidewalk, because there's an added space, if you want to buy added space and then have sidewalk control, that new sidewalk.
So the motion on the floor right now is...
The C I.
Is a vote, okay. To do away with the temporary, that's the best for you, or?
Yeah.
I'd rather wait till all the issues are resolved to change it.
Okay, any more comments?
Sidewalk issue is resolved before we give a permanent C O.
Everybody? Right now, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, right? Remember where?
Yes.
Okay, uh, is zone one? Zone one, yes, is zone two?
No.
Zone two, no? Zone three?
Yes.
Zone three, yes. Zone four?
Yes.
Yes, I'll go yes, one vote no. Okay, now we're moving down to the car show. Uh, oh, between the, uh, that's gonna happen.
Make a motion that the city purchase the necessary property for sidewalk to be resolved.
There's one, like, that's why we're just questioning there, that since the cost of, one is now active, and could maybe go into P O B R C April or May, if we're ready to make this, that would involve the sidewalk, the full line on the, on the south side. You want a sidewalk on those sides of work?
Yes. Did you, did you restate that again?
Make a motion that the city work on purchasing the property from the homeowner, make sidewalk on the north side.
Have a second? Is there a second? Zone one? Zone two? Guys, for lack of a second?
Let you know, they're gonna remove all them trees, no more shade there.
I didn't second it, Roger, I just want you to know.
Okay.
My thoughts on it is that we don't know what the people next towards them are willing to do, there's no guarantee that we'll, we'll be able to purchase land on the neighboring properties, so we may just have one section of sidewalk that ends, and then another one down here.
Well, I was getting one motion done, and I was gonna come back with another motion to handle it. We didn't get that far, nobody wants sidewalks in Lake Island, so...
I'm willing to...
I don't hear anybody made that comment, but the point is, is that, uh...
I'd love to hear your train of thought on that, sir, because that wasn't for us to consider. And so that was my rationale for the motion that you had on the floor.
The way I look at it is our requirement to provide safety for the citizens of Lake Island. We have a number of citizens that like to jog and walk in Lake Island. And we have a limited number of sidewalks in places for them to be, other than in the streets. The homeowner has given us an opportunity, he's gonna sell partial of his land so that he can install a sidewalk on his park. We can then go, our staff negotiate with the other remaining property owners to get the necessary property, so that when they do build a house there, they can have a sidewalk installed. They complete the sidewalk down Lemon from Furbat to Orange. That would give those citizens a place to walk safely, rather than in the street. That's what my goal was.
What about the house there's west of there, Roger?
Oh, west of Orange? It's a lake.
Are you not talking that big, huge house you're now building?
Talking about, that's the one that's gonna, that's willing to sell us this property.
Right.
The other ones next to it on the west and east is the ones that I, would be my second motion, that the city negotiate to obtain the, the right of way, so that when they do build there, they put in a sign, very good.
Where is one?
Very good.
There's no guarantee that anybody else is gonna sell us their property either.
Well, that, that motion is dead on arrival, so whatever feelings you have about it, it didn't get expressed in the motion. So, uh, what's the next thing?
Uh, I'm gonna make another motion. Make a motion that we have staff negotiate with the property owners along Lemon between Furbat and Orange for the right of way for sidewalk placement on the north side.
Have staff? Say that again, Roger. Motion have staff...
Have staff negotiate with the property owners along the north side of Lemon between Furbat and Orange for placement of sidewalks, either current or future.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Um, I have a question.
Question?
So that will come back before us, and then we can consider those, the goal is to consider them as a group?
Individually or as a group, the way the negotiation would go through with each property owner?
But it wouldn't be for them to purchase, it would be for us to consider one on one or as a group.
Yeah, but if it's the same property owner for the other three, then yeah, that would be a group, but this one would be separate, unless he owns all the property.
I think what you're asking is, is that if I come back to the commission, I'm approved to purchase anything, I would say that. Roger, motion is to negotiate, we'll bring back the result of the negotiation.
But maybe bring them up piecemeal, not...
Piecemeal or all, I understand what you're saying, you may not want to buy one, we should give them all.
Going back to the question, Heather, I think it would be advantageous if this passes, that my recommendation is to deal with all of them, in all or none. Because if not, then we're gonna have a slab of concrete here, and we're gonna have three lots of those slab of concrete. What is the question?
How does this reflect of a property that's not in this area, that have the same situation? But, uh, would they be required to make a sidewalk, or there is nothing for...
Well, your order requires that now, you waived it on a number of people, so we don't have consistency.
Okay.
But it does say, you know, they're either contributing or contributing, but it just happens to be a unique case in the sense that there's, yeah, there's no, there's no right of way, because you're needing property, they're contributing building sidewalk, public right of way. Here, we're looking to acquire their property, and then the question is, is did each one of them pay to put it in the sidewalk? So it's two times, I mean, they got the, they got the obligation to put in the sidewalk, who bought the property? And should be the devil's advocate, something like said to me, well, I'm selling to you, you want a sidewalk? You paid to put it in, you bought the property. But we won't know until we, until we talk.
And this is where the approval of the C O comes in play, because now you have no negotiating on it.
But I can hold this hostage, not so right now, let me see.
Well...
If we have a motion?
Yes. That was the discussion that you brought up. We have a motion and a second? Zone, no second?
Ask her.
Thank you. Uh, there's no second? And, so anything else, or just particularly?
Technically, in most of the reports, the commission should didn't waive the construction of the sidewalk, because it's not practical, unless your status is assumed that because there isn't land there, it's not practical. Technically, the judge said you're all waiting, it's not practical.
So the motion would be to waive the...
Obligation to build a sidewalk, because it's not practical.
Because it's incorrect. That's another motion.
Make a motion that we waive the, the only of the sidewalk, because it's not practical.
A second? Motion move in second, zone one?
Comments?
Comments? Yes, now you can come up, I'm sorry.
This is, this is just a Caleb by six six's for the, um, this is just something, we are an industry in town as well. If we are wanting something for people to enjoy and get through, but we have, and maybe this is more on the south side of Lemon, can we consider maybe an equestrian path that kind of wafts deeps maybe around the trees, but isn't maybe concrete, is required, because it may be quite, maybe there could be some sort of compromise there. We don't have any real equestrian paths in our town, but that is in our comp plan. All over in our identity as Lake Island, and, right, but we don't have anything like that, and maybe that could...
And maybe that could give people somewhere to be off the day, but it may not be a permanent sidewalk.
Any more comments? No comments? Zone one?
Could you come back to me, please?
That's not fair.
I'm trying to support this, and I'm...
Uh, it's selective calling on motions is frowned upon.
You mean one...
Right, it's, it's harder to do it after I've started, it's easier to do it before I start, because... But anyway, I'll, in this case...
I understand, I understand.
In this case, I will just give you a second. Uh, zone four?
Yes.
Zone four, yes. Zone three?
I think you said this...
Why are you making...
Exactly.
Yes.
You said this point.
Yes. Now, back to zone one? Uh-huh.
Four, three, two.
Uh, okay, yes, I'm, okay, now. So, three is no, so now you have, uh, two yes?
Four is yes, three is yes, two is no.
Two yes, and one no, and, uh, so even then, the man. Pressure.
Yes.
So, yes. The mayor votes yes. Motion passed.
What is that?
Four to one.
Four to one.
Four to one. Four to one. You captured one? Uh, starting?
Yes.
You captured one? Okay, moving right along. Now, the Memorial Day tribute, which is a car show, it's an application for, for a car show. Uh, applications is for, uh, have it before, any comments? Um... Well, we have a car show, and then...
What are you doing?
Uh... And then we have a recommendation for, for a, um, member. Let's do the car show first. Motion for the car show?
Make a motion that we have the application, a, uh, for the car show.
Motion second. Any comments from the audience? All in favor? Say aye. Ayes, have it, so move. Uh, next one would be request for a historical preservation member recommendation. Mr. Sean Apchar, is he here? Sean, after we come up? Okay, this is for a seat on the historic preservation board. This is Sean Apchar, twenty-two, what's his name? Okay, the girl had, uh, applications, or any comments?
There's two applications.
There are two?
The H2B recommended, the...
Espinoza?
Mr. Espinoza would be the replacement.
Okay.
And then Sean would serve as the alternate.
All right, so the sequence that you want to send is to, it says, Espinoza is the first seat, and Mr. Apchar would be the alternate.
Alternate.
Okay, so, let's get to the first one first, because he would be the alternate if it's salad. Um, so, Espinoza?
Age not here.
Not here? Was he here?
Probably not.
Yes, okay.
I know him personally. I know both the answers, but the first one.
Perfect, perfect. Uh, so, have you wanted to proceed, you want to proceed on the permanent seat, and then do the alternate second? Or do you want to do it over the same time?
If you accept the recommendation, just take a motion to include it up.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that the acceptance of two applicants as presented by the...
Second, second. Comments from the audience?
And why are you holding your talk?
None, if you might be able to sit for now.
Thank you.
All right, uh, motion, move second, zone four?
Yes.
Zone three?
Yes.
Zone two?
Yes.
Zone one? I should say no, where? Uh, no, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your willingness to serve on board.
Thank you again.
And you're gonna get another dealt on the firefighter.
Okay, moving down to the waiver finally. It's sitting here all the time. Uh, the Madison James Center is in need of a major repair of the main building. Uh, meeting cannot, can no longer be held there. The super seniors are enlisted to support the city to utilize Melissa Park, um, recreation room for their weekly meetings. The recommendation, the recommendation, the motion would be to approve this set super seniors group to utilize Melissa Park facilities for weekly mo, weekly meetings. Motion to approve this motion of the rental fee would be to be, to waive.
Next question?
Yes.
If you don't mind. I'm wondering if there's a length of time, is this, um, definitely, um, and then also, is it agreeable, um, with everyone that we, if we move forward, that if a party wants to book the venue for profit, that we give advance notice to the group in order to move there?
They are, I mean, they're only one, that's a week, on, for about two or three hours?
Between ten and one?
From ten to one?
Yes. Ten to one, so about four hours?
You want me to speak every Wednesday?
On a Wednesday from ten to one?
My name is Brenda Cusack, and I'm the director of Madison James Center in three-sixty, South, Third Street, here in Lake Island. And as to your question, uh, we, the super seniors need approximately four hours, ten to one, on Wednesdays. And I'm sure there was sufficient notice, we could just either move by me or not hold it and leave the, uh, the facilities in the age with sufficient notice.
Okay, and, um, is this for the foreseeable future, or is there, uh, do you have like an idea of time, a timeline, or...
No, I don't. You're talking about my favorite, uh, the people, the decision makers, and the people who will be, uh, dealing with what goes forward with Madison James, that is not me.
Okay.
I just do it for the group.
Okay. Understood? Thank you.
Yeah, we're hoping that the issues come out positive, so we'll, we'll have to wait and see. It's in God's hands.
It truly is true. And you say that because the board that governs it are creatures.
Yeah. You have to go there. Okay, uh, what's, what's the historic number rentals on... Mainly, mainly, do you think it's...
Nine instead of five, I'd say.
Um, is it four years?
Yeah, I have, I don't know how long that will be.
Especially this is a Wednesday, so it's not like it's a weekend or...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a weekend, so like, take, take that.
They'll never rent during the week, it's usually the weekends, and that time of day would be no problem anymore.
That's what I assume, but I just, you know, doing like...
No, you're right, most of it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I'm never actually seeing any during the week at that particular time, so I don't think there's a problem at all.
And super seniors have been a staple of our community for decades, and, um, under foreseeable circumstances, between the hurricane, damage to the property, insurance, not wanting to be able to pick up the damages, load the lanes, then they have been moved, um, by their board, and I just, I see the citizens, their board has made a decision that they don't want to move. So, you know, we are, we are for them, they're our neighbors, the organization heads, some places melting. So, this is the best that we can do for our neighbors, and it's, it's really a small ask, considering the country that they give, although, we are given city time, city locations, and that's our responsibility to, to make sure that we do it. Having said... Hold on, Ms. Coker, Ms. Coker? Ms. Coker, we almost got the vote on you, we about to give it to you.
No, but I was saying, I think, one of the things I want to say, we're not from out of town. We were born and raised here, out here in Lake Island. And all it wants is you see in here tonight, hope build that place down there. It wouldn't be a place if we didn't have, we started out a long time ago, all just work, work, work. That's all, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
I, I want y'all to thank you, you coming from out of town.
No, no, no.
We live out here. I've been out here for eighty-six years.
That wasn't, that wasn't...
Eighty-six.
I think that outstanding cook that you had dinner cooking the Thursday meals, that was, she's from out of town.
Yeah, she's the only one, two of them out of town.
Yes, we, uh, we were just amplifying what, um, Ms. Cusack was saying.
Yeah, well, I'll thank Ms. Cusack, whatever she say, I'll thank her.
We are all on the same thing.
May I make a motion?
Make for a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we, um, waive the rental fee for Melissa Park during the time requested by the super seniors group.
Second, motion moved in second. Any discussion?
I just want to say that, that's interesting, just based on the fact that, you know, um, the nonprofits, all the nonprofits, I think, obviously, allowing them to move in and use this building for free, and the fact that they've been here and they're not from out of town is great. Um, that is done with all nonprofit groups, that's what I think, so it automatically should be a...
Got some motion and, uh, vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? All in favor? Um, I have some move, and you're...
We believe.
It's already voted on.
I don't care.
Yes!
Brooke took you, took you around all night, and she came to buy her.
I'm gonna take a five-minute break.
You just got the same one thing, or...
You can go ahead and say it. I'm the commissioner for...
Congratulations, everyone, and ladies, you did it.
That's right.
Open the ears.
Yep.
And you could believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Things call me father.
Yeah.
Thanks, you have to help us.
She had fourteen cars.
I said, we know, I come from, uh, five cars. Oh, Brooke, don't be so hard.
You might, you might spark one of you. Alan probably, Alan probably.
Uh, right, I'm gonna record that, I need to.
And I was, I was so close to my end, and actually, I'm glad, you know, now that band, that band is, is on the rock. This is, this is, this is. On your higher.
Yeah, I did want to, yeah. We're about to go into the quasi-commission hearing. We're all in on that. And quasi-commission hearing, has anyone had any, uh, ex parte limitations with me of the item on this, uh, list?
Yes.
Yes?
I had a long talk with myself in America. Talking to you, man.
Alright, talking to you, son.
Because, because.
It's his argument, yeah.
But you have this thing, yeah?
Yeah, well, he was debating whether I was scored or against.
So, you can do that? Okay.
That's coming on back.
Will you borrow yourself? My pocket, yeah?
So, uh, we, uh.
I might have pulled A.
Pull A, okay. Pull A, and so we got B and C.
I made a motion.
We'll vote on B and C collectively.
I made a motion that we accept B and C on the cross election.
Okay. Motion, second.
He, he pulled it because he can't vote, which is unfortunate.
Any comments? No, zone one?
Yes.
Zone two?
Yes.
Zone three?
Did we second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Charlie.
Yeah, I was my second, yes.
They moved together, yes.
Yes, so we're down to three, zone three. Yes, zone four?
Yes.
All in favor, yes, that's so bad. Now go backwards to, to A.
Yes.
One oh nine Casa Vega Road, new sign.
Yes.
Roger, I have a question.
Yes.
Roger, can you?
Now, I'd like to talk about that.
I, I can't vote on this, I gotta make a vote.
So, I was going to suppose, oh, I, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm the one who filled the application for the American Legion, so I cannot vote on it. I already submitted my paperwork where I was staying.
I made a motion that we approve, second.
Any comments?
Yes.
All in favor, yes, and I agree, yes, well, except for when abstaining.
Yes, it was twice.
I don't want to say yes or no.
Just be on the same side.
Just be on the same side.
Not Chicago. Okay, alright, so we go past that, now we are down to the, to the commission reports, just that quick. Zone one?
I'm in this time, thank you.
Okay, zone two?
Uh, I got three items. One, the American Legion, a couple of years ago at the national convention, passed a resolution that on the last Saturday of April, the post should go out and do something for the community. So, we are having an American Legion Family Day on April twenty-sixth, from noon to six PM, in which we will be cooking hot dogs and hamburgers, we have card game games and a bounce house, and those who participate in our bingo will have bingo between one and three thirty PM. And it'll be at our facilities at one oh nine Casa Vega Road. And no, the new sign will not be done by then.
Is that also the, uh?
It's also the day of the, uh, weekend of the.
Auction.
Rotschel, and it's also the, the auction.
You bring up lots of food. Lot going on.
Um, for the veterans, Belushi County has, um, quarterly invited all of us to the Veterans Memorial Plaza grand opening, ninety AM, April twenty-fifth, at one twenty-five East Orange Avenue, Daytona Beach. It's the grand opening of the Belushi County Veterans Memorial Plaza, Plaza, honoring all those who gave. It will include music, refreshments, speeches from veterans and guests, and parking will be at the Henderson Judicial Center. And the veterans, they want to go, will see that, it will be available. And my last one, I had the opportunity on March twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, go to Tallahassee and talk to our legislators. It was a very interesting talk. One of them lasted about ten seconds because of between him going from a meeting and catching an elevator to another meeting. And so, that was, wasn't very informative on that one. Uh, but the other ones all echoed pretty much the same thing. And some of these statements you may remember from past commission meetings, from previous commissioners and stuff. And they says, if the cities would start doing their own business, and would quit using excuses like, um, we can't do that because it'll make a burden on the next commissioners, which is BS. We do everything that makes a burden on the next commissioners. Um, let's see, what was some of the others that were used? I sort of wrote them down. Um, anyway, out of about the six of them that they gave, four of them, I have heard at these commission meetings. And what the, the Tallahassee wants us to do, they want us to have local control. They want us to start taking control. And one of the other things was, well, let's don't do anything until the state mandates us to do it. They says, well, you want the state to mandate it, that is why we've got the local act? It's because we didn't do anything for it, the state mandated it. That is why there's even stricter requirements coming out of this session for it. That is why the vote is going to go before the citizens, they haven't voted on it yet, but they told us, the vote will be there for the citizens to either vote yes to keep property taxes or do away with property taxes. And guess which way that's going to go? Um, and DeSantis, Governor DeSantis plans on putting in some assistance between now and the time the citizens vote on it for the property taxes by reducing all property taxes by another thousand dollars. So that's going to hit a lot of the city's pocketbooks very hard. And a lot of questions are, where's the makeup money coming from? Well, they're talking about reducing the sales tax, they're not going to raise the sales tax. And they said the cities, citizens, the cities are going to have to start thinking of ways of making their own money. So, most of us talked about, I guess, our assessment fees program is going to be a lot larger than what it was as yet. So, um, and to top it all off, they're trying to pass a statewide to do away with, uh, business taxes. So the businesses will no longer have to register with the cities anymore. Um, so, I kind of, we said, well, that's going to kind of eliminate the regulatory effect of the cities on the businesses, and they says, not our problem, it's the city's problem. So, since the cities have sat back on their hunches and not done nothing, and allowed the state to wriggle away at home rule, guess what they're doing? They're giving you home rule, and it's going to be a pain to go through because you're going to have to do, we're, we are going to have to do an awful lot of stuff to be able to make up the difference of what's coming out of this legislative session. Now, if you really want to see what is going on on some of these, you can watch on D D S C slash E D, or on the Florida Channel. And you can watch them debating in their committees, and then you can watch the House and the Senate floor sessions, and they're debating, debating. And believe me, they are passing a lot of stuff. And it's not stuff that's helping the cities. We're going to have to, uh, knuckle down, there's one that they're talking about that's going to be mandated, that we have to put in, an ADU ordinance that meets their guidelines by the end of September of this year.
What order?
An ADU, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, that meets their guidelines. They said the cities can still require setbacks, but the ADU cannot be rented out for a shorter term frame than thirty days. Um, there's like four requirements on it, and I, I don't have a list in front of me, but one of them was, they want, they didn't want to create short-term rentals, so they said that they'd have to be rented out for no less than thirty days. Properties that they would still get their homestead exemption, even though it's a separate unit from the house, that's still on the property. Um, and there's a couple of other guidelines. But there's going to be a lot of changes coming out, and mustn't go into effect July first. Um, CRAs that we don't get involved with, but a lot of other cities are involved with. You cannot create any new CRAs after July first of this year, and all CRAs must be completed by
Forty-four?
June of forty-four or forty-six.
Yeah, one day sunset.
And it's one day sunset, and you not have them anymore. So, I mean, all our fundraising capabilities are being taken away, and we're going to have to come up with new ways of raising funds. There's also something to do with enterprise funds, which deals with our water supply. I didn't quite catch what they were talking about on that, but.
That was dealing more with communities, it's not only water, it's more reduced to the communities that have water.
Yeah.
Because they're taking the, the profits, you know, out of the fund, and they're using it to buy down their, their and they're going to be restricting the amount of money that can be used out of those funds, the offset.
Well, they were, they were tying into all, all the enterprise funds, not just the electric, but the electric was reason why they were doing.
But, but most, you'll find, most don't use water and sewer because they have to pay for themselves.
Right.
We don't take any profit off of that and roll it over to the general fund, electric is the biggest one that does that.
So, out of this session, there's going to be a lot of changes coming.
Roger, let me add on that too, is, is, um, Florida's also stored against firm of Doge.
Oh, yeah, heavy internet.
Every city in the state of Florida got an email about two weeks ago with a list of questions, and the deadline was to respond, you know, on those questions back to Tallahassee. They were kind of generic, none of them affected us right now, referenced that they were reporting your financials, but, but get ready, it's the start of them starting, I think, to get down to much more micro-level management of starting to attending your policies and your money on their opinion on whether you, they think that's appropriate or not.
Well, I know today they shut down, they passed a resolution to do away with the Micro workers protection act, which protected the micro, the.
Migrant.
Migrant, working class people, and for a lot, and making sure that the person that hired them provided healthcare and everything else, well, they shot down that act. And that's tied in with that ICE thing, so.
The ICE thing is pretty. And that's why they're lowering the age on working kids so that you can use your kids then to fill up the line. That ICE thing, if the city pushed back at all, and they were deemed sanctuary city, and they're going to remove, take state funds away and remove electric.
If you push, if you push back, yeah, you could get fined and everything else.
And it wasn't, um, I read it from Hollywood, it's not, it, it was, there were questions. You know, I think it's, you know, I don't have a problem supporting our government, that's not an issue. But it wasn't written on, and there was some questions, and, oh, no, we can't ask questions. You know, like, the city said, we need to transfer to the nearest detention facility, where's that? We got transferred to Miami, you know, I mean, just the basic question.
You, I think it's the branch jail.
They're on there, they're, I found out that they're going to build ICE, every branch, every branch jail, they're going to build.
Right.
So, there was just, but I just didn't like the state's response to say, you can't ask a question when you're deemed sanctuary.
Right.
That's all, you know, that's, in my opinion, I mean, I support the concept, I think we should be helping all levels of government to enforce law, but to sit there and say, you got to accept our agreement with no questions, I don't care for that.
You did? Yep, and that's it.
Great, thanks for the pause then.
I was going to say, I'm going to rock a room there.
You're quiet all of a sudden.
Um, for zone three, this past month, I attended another, uh, Blood and Stormwater Committee meeting. Had a long talk with Kenny Dewey and one of the compliance officers, Jim Cannon. Uh, it's amazing what they love, what's coming down the pipe, they're more than willing to work with the citizens, or, and the commissioners, as well as staff. The subcommittee is trying to work together, sixteen cities together within Belushi County. I think it's a great thing, I hope that we can move forward and accomplish something. Uh, I'm going to switch gears now, I do want to say one thing about Doge. I don't think Doge is wanting to micro-manage, I think what they're wanting to do is to make sure that, um, administration, government itself, is protecting the citizens, and that's the reason for all the questions. Um, one thing I do want to talk about, and which kind of falls into the conversation that, uh, Roger just had about the cities are going to have to start doing more things, I've been thinking about workshops. We haven't had any workshops to speak of. Very difficult to make any decisions, right or wrong. In fact, you can't make a decision if we don't have workshops where the commissioners know what's on the table and discuss it reasonably as adults, and be concerned for our residents. I would like to know, this is what I remember as workshops that we had. Um, we had two budget workshops, we had a special workshop that was over the corn mills issue. We had another budget workshop that was due to the valuation of our mileage rate. Um, I believe in September, and I think that it was Commissioner Eckert who, and this isn't the only request to have a workshop. Commissioner Rutledge has requested them, I've requested them, but we never had them. But I remember distinctly that September timeframe, that, um, Commissioner Eckert, we were discussing the I D con, Stormwater versus user fee. Mr. Simpson had a lot. Mr. Simpson had a lot to say about it, was explaining the difference between user fees and stormwater fees versus taxes. Well, we got nowhere, so Roger requested a workshop. We haven't had that yet, and budget plan is coming up here. What are we gonna do? We need to start working together, planning, because especially if the state's gonna throw it back on the cities, we better have a plan for what we're gonna do. Um. I don't know why anybody requests a workshop or anybody requests a workshop on this commission that we don't get it. Because in fact, I think we are the policymakers here.
Can you provide, can you provide a list of the workshops that were requested, because you all would approve?
Uh, did we, and did we not just, I just mentioned that in September.
But did you approve it?
Yes, we approved them.
I don't recall that, I don't recall that.
Well, go back and look at the videos, they're there.
No, we, we had nine workshops when I got here, and we didn't do a damn thing after those nine workshops.
Okay, we still need to have workshops.
Well, and hopefully you guys threw something in with them, because they're a waste of time when we sit in here and we get no direction.
Oh, I guess maybe the citizens are by all of us commissioners and getting someone new, I don't know.
Do that.
Yeah, you know. I know that workshops have been requested, they've been voted on, and we not have them.
I'd like a list of that then, so that we can, because I have no list of workshops.
Go back and look at the videos, my bad, I'm not doing your job.
I'm not doing yours either.
Well, let us just, let her finish with her statements so we can move on.
Um, yeah, that kind of brings me up to this point, then I'll be finished. Um, tonight, it was mentioned that a commissioner stopped the pumping. A commissioner sitting here tonight stopped the pumping. The commissioner has a name, and that is Commissioner Donata. I am all about transparency, I have no problems.
Did you ever report it to this room? Did you ever report it to Matt, that he spoke up at a meeting, that you stopped her pump being pumped? No, you didn't.
I didn't have to report it to her, I reported it to you, and you reported it to Ricky. And then y'all left the pumps out there, and I'm speaking, Jim.
You know what, Douglas, you got your ninety days. You got your ninety days? So if you have time now to, you know, because I'm not dealing with this anymore. This is the most unprofessional that I have ever worked with in twenty-five years. You have ninety days, this will give you an opportunity to find someone and get you through that process. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do this.
No, don't contribute to this, we're just kidding.
It's my time to speak.
And you didn't engage now, so you just follow.
No, I'm making statements, and then I get cut in. But, okay, so we wanna engage, no, I think that statement's been made about other commissioners and other cities, like Brenda Brasham. I'm professional, I'm here to do a job, I'm asking for workshops, they've been voted on, and then I have to get an argument about it? There's something wrong with this picture.
Well, if most, if they, I'm just gonna just respond to what you're saying. If a motion was made to have a workshop and no workshop was had, I, I wasn't here for that.
You were here for that.
I have not had a motion for a workshop.
I will go back, I will go back.
I've heard, I've heard comments, what, what's only happens is that we ought to have a workshop. We ought to have a workshop, well, we ought to have a workshop that make a motion to have a workshop, having that motion seconded and then voted on, and it doesn't happen.
Yes, I think.
We've had a number of workshops voted on a second that we haven't had.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Roger?
Anyway, you're ahead of it.
I think you already said. Um, but at any rate, I am transparent, I report back what I do, and I'm gonna do my job. And I think, you know, it puts people in a position when you say, there is a commissioner, they're wanting to know who that commissioner is. Let's tell them, I'm all for it. I'm finished.
Charlie, permission.
I think she's done. I'm speechless. You're not really leaving, are you leaving? Are you putting in your narrative?
Yeah, this, you have to enjoy what you do.
Things do come across as accusatory, that is a fact, and I get what you're saying.
Oh, that's nice.
So, um, I really hate that, but I understand. And I'm literally, I'm, I'm usually speechless, I'm very speechless right now.
Yes, please. With all due respect, everybody that's here, including the commission, I think that we are making a terrible mistake if we let it. Well. Not, 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 I'm not talking about a religion, I'm just talking about the work that he has done and continues to do for the city. And how he brought the whole team that works with the municipal administration, public works and police department together. We are one unit, and we work together to the good of the city, and it's because of Jim Cannon. So whatever we can do is make sure this commission is there, and they need to, and that's the most.
Mind if I say something? I'm gonna second that, and I have been the chief of police here for four years. I have been with the city for twenty-seven, and I have seen a handful of people try to tear this city down. And I have seen those people get defended, I'm not gonna sit here and name names, but it is a cancer, and it's eating this city a lot. And if this doesn't show right now what cancer is causing in this city, I don't know what else is. And if anybody in terms of, I, I think that this is a fool, let this man do his job, leave him alone, quit micro-managing him. It's not going anywhere.
I hope you're not using it as my hero anything.
But we don't, like Jim said, what he said.
I get no idea.
So I'm just telling you, the staff, I have seen, I'm not gonna say their name names, but I have seen questions, staff, 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 staff. Staff is doing their job.
I've never pulled a lever before, I was staff, right?
But you've asked a lot of public records requests, how many have you asked for? How many public record requests have they had? How many hours of taxpayer kind of public records requests?
And I will envision.
I'm, I'm talking, please, just let me finish what I'm saying. I have seen emails that have accused me of being discriminatory towards someone. I have been in this city twenty years, you find me, anybody else in this room, much less this city, if you say one negative thing about me.
I don't know what you're talking about.
One individual.
I don't know what you're talking about.
You do, you do, you do know who we're talking about. This is, you know exactly what we're talking about. Once again, I'm not gonna name any, don't let that be your idea. If anybody needs to leave, then you can send somebody else, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
I might pull it up there too.
Please do.
I came back because you guys really, that man he hired in there, that has been the most cohesive and the most transparent person I've ever worked for. He taught me budgets, he taught me everything. He's bringing me in the right direction, he knows his business, he knows his job. Personal stuff aside, the man knows his job. I've worked for, other day I think I counted eight administrators, eight areas, I don't know how many commissioners over by almost thirty years here. That's what I've worked for, because he is transparent, and he is, he's by the book. Believe me, you're making that bad to say that he goes, I'm so sad to see him go because what are we gonna get back? And we work, we as staff work as a team, he's our team leader. He, you don't know how much he does, he's just the work of everybody. It's just sad, I mean, I, I, we're going with the ideal person there. Most ideal person you'd ever had in that seat there, that didn't have an agenda. That, that's all I'm saying.
Uh, is that time to speak now?
No, 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 we just, no.
Those were departments.
No, they hadn't, you know.
I'm speaking now. Um, I've been to, on this commission, I've spent at least almost nineteen years between commissions and boards and every single board we've had, I've worked with every single city administrator we've had. I've worked with some of the worst and some of the best. Um, I have seen this city torn apart by petty innuendo. I've seen this city torn asunder by email quips and Facebook posts and the name of it. Um, I sat in the audience when, um, the commission fired, or not fired, terminated contract with the others. In the middle of a budget hearing, I mean, before we do our budgets. Um, if you don't do anything else, at least try to be strategic about what you do that's for the benefit of the city and not for some personal gain that someone might get satisfaction out of. I sit here a lot and I listen, and I don't speak up, I don't get on the Facebook pages, I don't do those things. But to have seen this city come from where we were, we brought back, we brought back Ricky, who had basically put the public's worst, whatever your likes or dislikes were, the public's worst was working when Ricky was here. Whatever the atmosphere that caused him to just walk away at great expense to his family, but decided this wasn't worth it at the time. Too early to have the city, um, rehire him, I remember it was around the Fourth of July, and once they decided that he would come back and pour the fourth, so that he could get the park, um, back, because it was flooded out there. Citizens rode around in their golf carts picking up the debris after the Fourth of July. People see this city for what it's worth. People see this city for the pain that happens up here, just like I'm sitting next door, city commissioner was gonna basically take the gavel out of my hand. We're, we're better than this, we're better than this. Um, the team aspect. We have Roxanne that came, um, because the former deputy clerk basically walked away from this city because of the harassment that she was going through. We got her replaced, not to say that she didn't have to have some harassment and disrespect, but she's still here. Um, we have managed to put this city back on track, despite the differences of opinions. And one, one of the things that makes the city commission, if you haven't been on a commission before and haven't known what it takes to, to be a unified body, then this is where you will learn. And the best way to learn what a unified body is about is to see that body disassemble itself. And then the citizens are gonna be, who you think are your friends, they're the ones that's gonna be putting you under the microscope. You think, for, for what? Grandstanding, to say that I did this, we don't, we work as a unit, whether you like the parts of the unit or not. Sent this form that I could give this. I coached track for many years, and one of the things that I coached in terms of a relay is that you have different runners in a relay. Nobody, the fastest person may not be the first person to start, the person has the best attitude or aptitude to catch up. So you need all four people working together. Nobody brings the same strength to the team. The fact that we all have basic experiences, knowledges, information, and opinions, and some of us even have morals. There, there are things that we will not do, there are things that we will not tolerate, but I'm glad this room is empty. For citizens, for the most part, Sean is on the video. But, um, we cannot at this point afford to have the cities break itself apart. We've sat up here and people are coming to our meetings, they're concerned about their homes, the community, there's. And we're sitting up here doing what? Rather say twiddling your thumbs. I think we're doing more than twiddling your thumbs because from the point of view that I see, um. We actually did get something done, that was on the, the state of the city. The number of things that were on that list that we did, for every one of those things that we did, I guarantee you, there are five to ten things that people wish we would have done differently. The fact that we did what we did accomplished, we don't look back, we didn't do this, we didn't do that. So I don't know where this meeting is gonna end or how this meeting is gonna end, whether Jim puts in his papers. Um, but you cannot expect people to just accept this, I mean, let me back it up. I've seen people walk away from this job because of this commission, not job, this responsibility. I've seen people, I saw, I saw Nancy, Nancy Wilson up and just resign because of the things that were happening. I've seen commissioners, city administrators, basically take the back door out of here and didn't tell anybody where they were coming. Uh, I'm not gonna take this, I'm not gonna belabor this, I mean, one of the things, the benefits of being the mayor, get to speak last. And what I've heard and seen here tonight, again, I'm just glad that we don't have a full house. I don't know what the end game is, I don't know what your intended purposes are, if there are any. Is there anything for the benefit of the city? Is this anything for the benefit of some clique, clique, clique that we have? But this is not the right time, our country is moving to places that we've never been before. I don't think you all understand fully where we are right now as a country. We are worthy, we're being considered to be the lastest out of the world. People are losing their ability to have a, a, a conscience about who they acquire, who they hire. We are not in a good place as a country. And all trickles downhill, we're, we're the bottom level, the bottom level on this trickle. Federal government says what they're gonna do or not gonna do, and then they give it to the states. States see that the federal government is not getting what they're used to getting, then they take it away from the county. And then the county turns around and tells the city, you've got to do more. So we're at the bottom end of this trickle down, and the citizens, they're even worse off because they're looking to us because you don't see a senator in your gas station or on your grocery store. You don't see a congressman, you very rarely even see a state representative, but you do see a city commissioner. You do see a mayor, you know where they live, you can knock on that door. I think I'm gonna end this right now, because, um, I'm only gonna say this to get this out of the way. One of the things that we did. One of the things that we did this, this weekend, on Tuesday, we took eight of our kids from the Boys and Girls Clubs up to Tallahassee. There were three hundred and twenty-four representative clubs that service more than two hundred and eighteen thousand kids. We were up there to be able to let the kids see how it works. And we gave them an opportunity to see and speak to senators and congressmen. Where they take this, they're the ones that are gonna be running our states and our cities and our city commissioners. And hopefully that we'll have not tainted the water so that they won't even think about it. But at that note, I would say...
Vernon, you've got a whole section to go through yet. Vernon, you've got a section to go through yet. You've got, we've got an employment application to be awarded.
Yes, you're right, you're right. See, see the emotional part of, I had the guy talking about he's fired, he's quitting, and now Ricky's stuck out there. This is where we are, this is, this is...
All the chaos.
This is the chaos. I'm sorry, I, I apologize. Uh, thank you, Rob, for pulling me back in. I was a little bit overwhelmed. Thank you, brother, I appreciate you. Thank you, Glenn. Okay.
I thought you did, that's what I thought it, but anyway, so where are we now, please? Can I tell where we are? Rick, Rick Cassidy did so.
They, they still gotta go, but I got, I got somebody on the, we're hiring, they were, we offered a job to.
You're right.
Because the other guy didn't want it.
Grant, so why do you wanna introduce his application or what? Did you wanna talk about his application?
No, I just wanted to give your blessing because we'd already hired somebody. I know we have to go through, you can hire him.
You hired two.
Yeah.
Even though the one guy nailed on the lap on the day of starting, and we had another panel, we just wanna automatically assume you approved two, but I wanted you to know that it's a, it was accurate, accurate, that's not the name we did. So we brought his resume in, and so basically you did approve the two positions. We just want you to be aware of that.
That, that was filmed a second ago.
Yes, this is filmed in the first...
Hope.
Yes.
We hope.
Yes. At this point.
Well, if you need a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve his hiring.
Most of you moved. Second. Most of you moved second in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any poses? Some move.
Thank you.
You wanna, you wanna say anything other than a report?
We wanted to just break quickly on, on Michigan.
Yeah, um, when they talked about Michigan, we, we have no intention of opening, uh, Orange or all that area there where we're too cheap to live on. The problem is we don't have enough stores out there. We get a couple good rains already come back up. So we're gonna leave tangerine and all that status quo right now. Plus, we pulled tangerine up on our side, the road's deteriorated, John, repair. We had FEMA come out and we're trying to get them to do mitigation, to get money, but if we do anything before they do something for us, then we won't get anything. It's kind of like, like I was saying, we can't go into Pennsylvania right now. It's, it's one lane, it's all apart, but we don't have the funds. The city does not have the funds to fix that. But the way it's gotta be done, so we're just a status quo, so I'm leaving that because I know if we get any rain, it's gonna come right back up where we're at. And I don't have like Mr. over, if you said we only have one wing there, it's very dangerous to draw. So I just want you guys to go work and open it up.
I, I think there's a point that we don't get to translate that because of, what, what point I'm talking about? If we do something before FEMA approves it, then we do it, then we eat it.
We've asked them for mitigation.
We asked them.
What have we do to the timing and all that, they all do that.
So, yeah, we didn't slack on what we were doing, it's just that we have to wait till their wheel turns.
Everything's waiting, man.
And it's, and again, it's, it's the citizens who see the wheel not turning and figure that we ain't doing nothing.
We're, we're meeting with FEMA minimum every two weeks.
Yes.
This next cycle is for a week because we're getting close. They came out, we're able to look at the roads that were underwater. So the next step is then sending us back mitigation plans, what money might be there to go forward. So, you know, this aspect, we're doing nothing. I mean, and we're, we're, they either come up here from Melbourne and, and they have been as pro and as positive and helpful as can be, we have no complaints.
They've been really great, I mean, they're just super great in front of us.
And they're working out for us to be at a hundred percent reimbursable on what we've spent.
The, the continuity of what you guys are talking about is what does not get seen. Everybody wants something to happen in their own time, in their own way, but the fact that you are doing it step by step strategically is what is missing. And it's also, it, it's not lost, it, from the dais, there's got to be some responsibility as to find out what it is that we are doing before we make decisions about, statements about.
And the playground, the parts have been ordered ten to fourteen weekly time, they come from China. I did, I, I, oh, hold on, there are a little support, I think several Milwaukee. So, next time you do a playground, there's a company in the United States, they're more expensive, but you can get parts redolled. I did order, the bench was back, I ordered two. They were relatively weak, but if I'm gonna have to do this, I better get some parts in here because of lead time, I ordered some more steps that are coming for it too on the big part. And we're gonna try and order some more this next time, and I know it could be possibly broken beginning here. The bouncer toy is being repaired, they're pulling out next week, they're gonna machine it, repair it, and powder coat it with American powder coat. So a lot, you know what it is, they don't powder coat, they plastic coat it. So there will be powder coating, the real powder coat, the whole powder coat there, and all that will be taken care of. And the tires that were in fell is from defect, but the markings are gone. They're gonna go up, re-dust it, fix it, everything. The misconception I had all these years was, we have to put back factory parts. We do, you have the warranties, they won't cover it. But as long as it goes back and we have inspections, I have two companies that give me parts. They will not go back to service, so they're inspected by a playground company and certified. They will be certified every year, whatever it recommends, so we know they're covered.
And that, that also helps the, the Boys and Girls Club, who has a separate organization where their kids are involved. So that means that they came and inspected the playground and they found defects that they were told that they had to repair in order to see the club. When we get back to them that we'd already been addressing these things and we were always, already in the process. And what we're finding out, what I'm finding out, is that because we had bought the playground with certain warranties and those warranties are manufactured in China and wherever, we, we, we bought it. I don't, I wasn't rattling.
And this, but it's an industry trend, I mean, I'm playing this. Most, um, of those playgrounds are made overseas. There's only one company that I think has been up to ten seats called Gametime or whatever that makes it in America. So if you're gonna do that and you want parts readily available, or you buy a bunch and you get it, why buy extra steps and crab seats and all this, I'm gonna order some more. So we have them because the lead time goes, but they can make it, we can't get it.
Lead time may as well also take into consideration now we have tariffs.
Well, this was before the tariffs.
Well, nothing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We might have it before the tariffs.
Anything that we do, anything that we do beyond the tariffs will also include an additional price.
Fairly, the other thing people in the community may not understand through the parks, your parks get more wear and tear than any traditional city park because your parks are also used to like school playground. Okay? So your normal kids on the evenings and weekends, when you have twenty kids on a teenager's daughter, and how many kids were on your hang, your...
Oh, tire swing?
I mean, we, we can reach out to the school and then ask their cooperation to get sites. Their lack of supervision and allowing the kids to do what they're doing in the parks, they're costing past their, in Lake Helen. And most of those kids are not Lake Helen kids.
And the wear and tear, when I said like the Picherosa where you walk on it, they said the wear and tear hobbles that thing. I said it's like five people. But there's so much activity on that line. You know, if you're trying, it's gonna fail across a lot of that. You know, it's just, you can't take that, depending whether it's commercial or not. It's not designed for over, 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 over. The kids, people out there on any given day, after riding on this, how we are their childcare services for them. There's no way out there and all the kids go in there and all they do is ravage that stuff and leave. And you can tape it off, you can do whatever you want, but parents won't watch them, untape it and well play. So we just shut down from the night one, lock it up, and I'm sorry, that's the way it's gonna be. We can't keep it open and keep you happy because you're gonna do something like that. I can't pull these out of the concrete there. If I put a barricade here or something, gives it a barricade, it's gonna be concrete, we're gonna get sued. So we're gonna do it exactly what it's gotta be done, and then we have the certifications, they come out, that'll also cover for liability and insurance, we'll have all that. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
I have a lot more, by the way. Oh, we learned how, that was, we were kinda bringing that, but we, we're gonna bring that next month for you guys approval to get on the tank.
We need to figure out how to like, we need to...
Yes, we just wanna make sure we do it the right way, but it'll be USG, this is doing our hybrid tanks now. We're gonna go into what they call evergreen, is what we have right now. You pay so much upfront, they do our repairs upfront, they're gonna, we do the tower this year, paint it, everything, load post, everything on it. You pay a certain amount for five years and it goes down with a lesser amount than you never touched again, like with our hybrid tanks. Actually, this tank I'm paying over our hybrid tanks. We don't pay for that anymore. It's our evergreen, they call them, forever maintenance. And they take care of it, because we have the skater on there and we also have the water tower for all the workers on there now. So you can't, if you take it down, you gotta put a tower on. But it's a landmark, it's ours, so I'll put lights on, it's a light up at night.
God damn it, it's ours.
Anything else I'd like? I can give you a whole name or a...
I just gotta watch your books. City man, we buy that. Oh, sorry. All the names, even the whole, even the...
I have to change for...
If you wanna get on the water meter issue, like you took this nap. Yes, and believe me, I have... I know exactly what it is. I mean, because that's, if they bought a software, the one that had the force guard that, we can track on any given hour what they do, so we can show them where the water is at, you know? And a lot of them have sprinkler system, when they get hit, might as well shut the power off, they go back into fail safe mode, there are battery settings. And nobody notices because they might not, and they go like, hey, no.
Another rainstorm?
Yeah, so I mean, and we're pretty good about smoothing out some things, you know, going on. We help people tremendously, if we can find something, we help them in the field. I helped them before against the... We try to make sure everything's right on their side because there are cities that they are paying for it. So we go out, I'm out there at four eleven South U, but they, they checked everything, yeah. Guy come out, the wall, they stick up a whole service line and everything turned off, they still had a little bit of those things picked up at the end. So I thought we'd be back tomorrow when we set this, we can work on it in two days. And it ended up being a leak probably in their slab where they had it or their thing there, but we managed, we're so appreciative, but we're there to help them. We wanna find it for them, we can, we can only do so much, you know, but we do, we, we, all my guys are good about that.
I was just wondering if you knew where the problem came from for a seventeen minute dollar bill.
And a lot of people are getting their bill from first time because they didn't have any usage, because they'll go, oh, my bill, eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents bill, that's the minimum bill. You have a dead heater for how long, you know? Free water for this long term now. It's just coming out and this next billing cycle should equal out everybody who went on a regular billing.
It should be back on a regular.
Yeah, regular cycle, we got a long one and a short one, and now we have a regular, and it'll be back on track. But that's all where, Erin goes in every day or every other day, I go into it and it sends alarms. We can program it one alarm, we won't let people know right away, hey, you gotta find the valve, check it. Uh, we have, um, if a heater's not working, it'll tell us and we can catch it, or hands off, it's not programmed or not hit by a motor. It's amazing, but you have to work through the system to do that. You have to go in there with it. And they send us reports all the time, all night before our funnels and everything, so we have it.
One thing I learned about the system is that there was someone that had their water turned off because they didn't get to the city in time. And I got a call, I called Ricky, and Ricky pretty much said that the person that runs the computer is gone, so there's not any manual thing that you can do to go to turn the water off.
There are certain heaters out there that are put in certain places that are electronically controlled.
It takes, it takes a lot of the gift giving away as to, well, hey, your water's been on track, get to the city before we close, we gonna allow you to pay it online.
So there are heaters out there that do shut off by pushing a button on the heater. And it will also give them either off or trickle, it'll allow them to take a miss. So we could put, we put it on trickle if they are, and that way they can still get water, it's standing on.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else?
We're good.
I'm gonna let you have the handle.
Chief.
Before you have to add a moment of emotion, that vote cannot have any reservations, resignation beforehand.
Well, that's, one of the things I wanna say, one of the things I wanna say is, um, I wanna apologize. I don't, I'm not apologizing for what I said, because I mean, their work, every single word I said, I'm apologizing. Can you please be quiet while I talk?
Please, in the background.
Thank you. So, there, things were said tonight, but there's a reason they were said. It's not because somebody overreacted, it's not because somebody was being a baby. It's stuff that's been going on for a long time and it's building, and most of you know what that is. We're not, we're not gonna steer, I don't know what we're talking about, we know what we're talking about. So what I wanna ask you is, Jeremy, I love you, I love you, that's, you're the best boss I've ever had. I've had a lot of bosses, and you're the best boss I've ever had, I don't lose you. So I would like you guys, somebody please take the motion to re-just his designation.
I make a motion?
Heather asked me, I'm gonna talk to staff, Marbury, our staff meeting, I'm gonna talk with my wife this weekend.
Can I say something here? I never asked for his resignation. I never asked for a motion for his resignation. He's the one who said that he's unwilling.
I'm not gonna respond, that's not even talking, I'm not gonna respond. It's, I'm not gonna respond. I'm not gonna sit here and listen to somebody not take responsibility for stuff that they've been doing for months and months and months.
I haven't seen anything yet.
Really?
And I hear some words, but it's a same clip, it's a same clip that you don't blame their clip, it's you. This city administrator, the last city administrator, the city administrator before that, this mayor, this mayor, doesn't matter, it is head on main, right? Totally, totally. And where we at, they know this is a city, nowhere. We have stormwater, I've been done in twenty years. We have people that complained about it, the servant commission, they didn't do anything about it when they were on the commission. Nothing is done, they start heading back and forth, back and forth. You know who deals with it? The citizens and the staff. That's the case of all.
I've said my piece.
My suggestion as an HR manager, my experience in HR, is that the first workshop that we have is on the city staff and the commission. Or have an open discussion where we can work out some of these issues. There, there's, there's a fracture. We have to work together, we're gonna support the city. We cannot be on two sides of this spectrum or the issues. We have to be working together, or we're not gonna accomplish anything. We're gonna find ourselves in the exact same place next month, and not that for that, and not for them. So it's not a workshop, it's something informal. We have to do something to get past where we are today, or we're gonna continue to have this discussion. Whether it's Jim as the city administrator, or, um, Chief as the police, Chief, Chief of Police, whoever it is in this position, we'll continue to have the same tactics, the same practice and the same behavior when most people get together and fix it. This is not gonna change, and it's not only any one person, it's us as a group. And city staff is a group, and it's the commission as a group. You're gonna continue to have the same problems if we don't sit down and address what the problems are. It happened before with the other commission. Those, these are the same issues, just different players. So what are we gonna do, continue to repeat the same thing over and over again? This is staff, we're trying to run the city. This is staff that we're also not having this conversation. We've got to do something different, and continue to do the same thing again, it doesn't end in the same response. My suggestion is some sort of workshop, some type of gathering where we have a conversation and it's not that, and somebody else has a different suggestion, put it out there. But we have to fix us. We have to fix this room, this is who's running the city. We don't fix us, can we have a closing meeting, Scott?
No, we cannot, it's not, it's not...
Okay, it's not, it's not.
It's gonna be staff.
We need to do your leaders a little bit.
I just got one question for you. When, when FEMA discusses the road and the flooding on the road and everything else, is there any way to tie Lake Harlan as. Part of the mitigation to resolve that issue?
The road, they, the flooding issue is water current. And water current has been discussed with FEMA, involving us, so we can have a good deal of that, engineering or whatever, they're focusing on the road aspect, because they're gonna tell me. Lake Helen's a closed lake. Got a certain number of am, amount of water, and so they're not gonna come in with a pumping system or a.
Well, no, the reason, the reason I'm saying is, Casa wants to devote. The land around Lake Harlan, and he wants to manipulate. The lake by moving dirt from one side to another, so that he can increase the number of houses on a certain, on one side of it next to the, for back. Which, when he builds a house, is, is gonna increase the flooding issue for the rest of the places around Lake Helen and. Um, the Lake Harlan area where he's developing. Which is why I am always wanting to be voting for him to not be allowed to develop that property. And that's why I was wondering if there's a way of adding that as a mitigation effort, to have FEMA's help. And federal government purchasing that property and using, you know, excavating it to make it a giant water retention asset, to handle all the groundwater.
And that could be a discussion with water current in mind, as Lake Harlan would be. One of the workplaces where water would go, and then we have to know how that impacts the two houses. On there, but that also comes down to the fact that you've got a property owner that owns that property.
Right.
He's got certain vested rights. So he could turn around and say, I won't build any houses, just pay me how many millions of dollars. I would make on this property for developing it, and any of it, and I won't develop it. So I mean, that will be part of the, we had that discussion with I, with water current, in the sense of, we don't have any cases to pump. And that may be the only thing that is, is, is a, is an alternative, is, is that. But at the same time, I cannot tell Mr. Acosta, he can't go through his, his application. Now, he'll go to P O D R C, and you guys, so we've got a lot of steps to go through, and the plan that we saw a week or so ago is dramatically different than what we're used, because. There's a lot more retention, not only Lake Harlan, but all the retention ponds they built, because they know what the reality is, and, and there are corners. That are dry and whatever can be built, but can he get the number of homes that they're looking out there, a hundred and nine? I think that is very difficult.
I don't see why we're gonna get that stability.
But, but I can't stop him from going through the process, he has his due process, in terms of that, and he does have property rights, and. I won't get into voting or not voting, the stuff they have to advise him, in the sense of votes we can have, but if somebody meets the code, they're doing what they're doing. Then there comes down to the issue where maybe votes to deny actually have cost some money, because we imple, you know, somebody's property rights, and it'll fall. But we're a little ways away from, from that, however.
Mayor, finally. Um, one last, that I, I think it would, it'll bring about staff, uh, kind of some, a little bit of business, so our staff is telling us that we need a workshop. That there is an issue, we're, we're seeing that here. And, um, in the same fashion that I have supported other departments heads here, I want to support the staff that is talking to us tonight, telling us there's an issue. So for that reason, I think it is important that I make a motion, that we have a workshop. And hash it out, figure out how we can support our staff. So that our city and our commissioners. Um, can move forward together and conduct business, because the way that it is being conducted right now is ineffective. And I hope that Jim will reconsider, which is my sense of internal, please reconsider. But I, I don't wanna lose a valuable asset to our city, there's been a lot of business that has happened since you've come here, a lot of knowledge has been passed. And I don't wanna lose that, but either way. Roxanne's right, we have to get on the same page. And find a way to collaborate, and whatever that we can do as the commission to support our staff, I think it's important that we do that, so.
I, actually, I'm not, I, you have to, you have to, yeah.
No, I gave a life to you.
You're a son of the divine, it's on your shot in the divine. There he was, there he doesn't want. Motion to the second.
Um, ma'am, amendment, yeah, two weeks.
Twenty-one, two weeks, twenty-one days, what are you gonna call it?
No, it'll be fourteen days.
We'll, we'll let the calendar alarm, we'll, we'll let something happen. For reference, make sure you're in check.
Okay. I don't need a second one, man.
Okay, yes, second. Discussion.
We're just hoping for, no, we.
I took it. Uh, comments, then, uh, motion, amendment.
Yeah, you said, this all, so, all good.
All is good, I, I. So, no motion, I.
The altar won't have nothing that happened tonight. Hmm, the altar won't have anything?
Me?
Yeah, you.
Rolling, going, going, good night.
Yeah, I won't call you back, you guys will play a second.
I didn't even see that.
No, they were out, they were out the day of the vote, or day before, that's when we were told. But that, we were local one stops, um, and that, when was their first one? I would check for four on the phone, but I, 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 I feel scared about it, if we.
Indirectly.
They said they had, I don't know. Thirty, thirty, you have someone in there.
Do you remember this video?
Yes. I don't know, they sent them, I'll find out, I'll find out.
Where are we gonna go?
I don't think it's a thousand dollar, or just. I can't, I can't, I can't. They, they, they can't, they, my heart, they don't know where it's at. They could be off late, it's okay. Didn't ask the officer, he didn't come back tomorrow. No, he's, he was there, no, she, like, he's gonna write a statement, but he said he can't write the whole, because he's a teenager, like, I didn't say anything. He said, he's saying, I cannot even, so it's all, I'll see her. I love, I see you a little bit earlier. Back in my swing and chair.